Good morning all, let's call the meeting to order. We are assisted this morning in prayer by Ara Rahman. She's a peace ambassador and is a member of the Muslim faith tradition and will lead us in prayer this morning. You can pull that around, set yourself up exactly like you want to be set up. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Assalamu alaikum. Peace be with you. Good morning and welcome to everyone. Thank you for inviting me to pray with you this morning. Let us pray. Dear God, Almighty Supreme Being, the Creator of all, Allah, the infinitely compassionate and most merciful. Allah, we are ever so grateful to you for the life you have given us and for the countless blessings and privileges that you have showered upon us. Thank you for the opportunity to live in a diverse community where we are able to pray to you in multiple languages with our sisters and brothers from all faiths, colors, cultures, and backgrounds. Your creativity also shows us that there are as many ways to receive as there are as many souls. Through your elegant expression of diversity, you tease us that each of us is unique in our own very special way. Each of us bring our unique gifts of talents, knowledge, abilities, strength, and the like to contribute to the betterment of our whole community. O the compassionate Creator, please give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the courage, and compassion to understand each other better. Help us to learn from one another so that we bond, grow, and evolve as a much stronger community living in peace and harmony. O the gracious God, thank you for giving us our elected leaders. Please guide them to know and understand the needs and aspiration of our citizens. Give us the wisdom and courage to use our precious natural resources wisely. Keep us keenly aware that the choices we make today not only affect us now but also will have lasting impact on our future generations. Guide us to be good towards and help us to make decisions which will stand out as examples of justice and peace. We request you, God, please be with the sick, the weak, the hungry, the homeless, the needy, and the helpless everywhere and see to their needs. Please accept our prayers and forgive us for our mistakes and help us so that we can learn from them. We are ever so grateful to you, Allah, for this gift of time and the opportunity to pray to you together. We love you, God. Ameen.
I'm joined this morning by Tristan Tiff-Tixon and he is an eighth grader at Trinity Lutheran School. He's going to help me with the pledges.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good job, buddy. I got it today. There you are. Y'all want to join me? How are you? I have a proclamation this morning concerning American Red Cross Month. The proclamation. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, take lifesaving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas, we would like to remember those who help all of us here in San Angelo by giving their time to help their neighbor and thank our heroes, our volunteers, class takers, and financial supporters who help us assist those in need. And whereas, in San Angelo, the Red Cross works tirelessly through its volunteers and employees to help when disaster strikes, providing the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatics, safety, and first aid. And whereas, across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year, it provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other lifesaving skills every year. And whereas, our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time and money to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Now therefore, I, Al Van New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2013 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all Americans and San Angelos to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. I'm joined today by Janet Karcher, who's their executive director, and Terry Hux, who's their board secretary. So, would you like to say something?
Sure.
Well, there you go.
How are you, Terry?
Thank you. We truly appreciate the opportunity to come today and have Al Van New proclaim March as Red Cross Month. We've been a very busy organization the past couple of weeks and we really appreciate the support that the community lends to us. Without the support, the community is, you know, less resilient. And that is really our mission, is to ensure that this community is able to prevent, prepare, and respond to disasters. So, thank you. He's been on every shift that we've responded to. Every time I show up, he's there.
Okay. So, there's your little anecdotal fact of the day. Janet is married to a local firefighter who has been, I guess, at these recent fires. So, every time she shows up with the Red Cross, he's already there with a hose. So, but anyway, okay. Well, thank you all very much. You want a picture?
Sure.
All right. Let's step right over here. Hold that. One, two, three. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Also, this morning, I'm proud to have a recognition for one of our city employees, Veronica Sanchez. You want to join me this morning? She's our City of San Angelo Human Resources Manager and she was recently renamed, recently named, the Human Resources Professional of the Year by the Concho Valley Society for Human Resources Management. This is good stuff. I like this. Veronica is, has, is the Human Resources Manager, recently named the HR Professional of the Year. The Concho Valley Society for Human Resources Management is an affiliate of the National Society for Human Resources Management, the world's largest association devoted to human resources management. The local chapter consists of 50-plus members who represent large and small employers across the Concho Valley. Veronica has worked in the city's Human Resources Department since 2007, serving as its manager since 2008. Her nomination noted that she has excelled as the group's president, calling her a natural leader, who agreed to serve a second term to help develop other potential chapter leaders. The nomination also cited Sanchez for planning and executing initiatives that won recognition from the SHRM national body. So, well done. Okay? Thank you very much. We have a certificate here commending Veronica for doing more, doing it better, and exceeding our expectations. Thanks so much. Are you speaking?
That'd be great.
Laura, what have that?
My speech won't be as long as that one. I will, I'd like to start off by saying that I'm honored to receive this recognition from the city today and I'd like to thank the Concho Valley SHRM Chapter for awarding me for this back in January, with this back in January. The Concho Valley SHRM Chapter is dedicated to providing the local community, small business owners, and obviously the HR profession with pertinent human resources information. Some of the board members joined me today, so if they could wave, they're in the second row, the loud row, right here. I'd like to thank them personally for their hard work. They work very hard in making sure that all of these initiatives are met and I am ecstatic to be a part of that. So, thank you. Thank you for the city in allowing me the opportunity to excel in my profession by being a part of this organization as well. So, thank you.
The board? Want to be up here with the San Angelo City?
Sure.
Two for two. That was me. I'm telling you, that is a goddamn, that was supposed to go. So, I was at a seminar recently with Veronica on the Affordable Care Act. I thought she was going to go ahead and just lay out for you what we're going to do to comply, but, all right. The public, the council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. The public input on a regular agenda item should be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a future, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Do I have a request from council? I was wondering about item number nine, just to get, just to understand it, okay? So, if we could, I don't really, I just wanted to explain to us, okay? Okay.
Motion to approve consent excluding item nine.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move forward with public comment on any item that's not on the agenda at this time. Come on up. Just introduce yourself.
Bill Richardson.
Okay, hi.
Hi. I'd like the council to take a look at, I think it's called Old Cristofer Road or Highway 378 between South Chadburn and the Loop. You know, there's a lot of construction going to be coming there from the oil field and that, and that's quite a narrow road. And there's a lot of traffic there in the morning and the evening, coming and going from Goodfellow, and I think that's a future problem. You could ask the, Goodfellow don't open up the North Gate, but then you'd have traffic coming through the Glenmore neighborhood. We already have large trucks coming through that neighborhood and, you know, traffic using it for a shortcut. And like, we have, I think there's a problem with the signage or something along Bell Street or Houston Hurd up there because we have tractor-trailers coming down there and they come across River Oak Street or Windham Street and we know they're lost because they stop and they ask the neighbors, you know, how to get out to 87. So, obviously, there's a problem there and there's a potential for a larger problem for trucks coming through the neighborhood. I think that's something that should be looked at and maybe we can ask our state representative to take a look at that.
Okay.
Mr. Derby.
Right. Definitely, we can ask Texas on the parts of this that are, that are state highways?
Yes.
To take a look for sure with the local engineer and those kinds of things. So, I appreciate it. We all recognize that there's extra traffic occurring right now. I'm assuming there may be some problem with the trucks because there's a lot of construction on the south, on the east loop, southbound traffic, where they're putting in the overpass on 765 and they're also doing construction south of 765 to where it intersects with 277. And so, that probably is rerouting folks and that could be causing some of the confusion for those trucks you were talking about. But, but so, but we're going to have, but we're going to have a lot of activity on Old Cristofer Road.
Okay. I've lived in the neighborhood for 11 years and this has been going on for 11 years. So, it's just a problem, I think, with the signage and plus, you know, on Old Cristofer Road, there, there's the Goodfellow traffic, which is when the shift change, there is bumper to bumper. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I drive that highway all the time, so.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration.
You bet. Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. Move us forward then to item number nine. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Go ahead.
Public comment. I just want to make a clarification. I've had a couple of phone calls and read some misrepresentation at last meeting with reference to the council just now, looking at the city streets and its condition. Why did we have to wait until election time to all of a sudden look at the condition of our streets? And I want to assure you that we are not just now looking at the streets. You know, two, three years ago, we got a report from our guys that told us we needed $151 million, I believe, in listing the streets that seemed to us have the worst need. We have been looking at it. We have been trying to figure out where to get the money and how to pay for it, but it's not something that we just started. What we're doing now is an in-depth study of priority which should be done first. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. I also, while we're in public comment, want to say that I'm only keeping up with this in the newspaper, but it certainly is a time for us to recognize and honor the fire department. So, they're doing an awfully good job as you look at the fact that things are not spreading from buildings that are on fire to surrounding buildings. And some of these fires are extremely hot. If you look at that Catfish Corner Fire where it melted the building, they definitely had their, their hands full not letting that move to any other buildings. And the apartment complex next to a private residence and didn't allow, and that was some, only, only some 15 feet from that apartment complex to that house. And they didn't allow that fire to get to that house. And so, I think those guys are obviously doing a very good job and we're always proud of city employees and in this case, we're very proud of the fire department for the work they're doing and hope they get to do less in the immediate future.
Yes.
Okay? So, anything else? All right. Item number nine, I just wanted a little, a little clarification for what it is, what it means. Make sure Goodfellow Air Force Base is, is up to speed. That's what I was after. So, if someone could address that for me.
Mayor, council. Vic Davas is with the police department. It's time to communications with the 911 division. This resolution basically is allowing Goodfellow to become their own public safety answering point. As stated, it's becoming a standard for all military installations to answer their own 911 calls instead of them going to public safety or city answering points. This started, I believe, because of Colleen incident and now it's taking place all, you know, pretty much across the United States. And we've been answering their 911 calls, which have been very, very few since the inception of 911 in San Angelo in the mid-eighties. They were considered part of city of San Angelo. Now, they're, which they still are, but now they're becoming their own public safety answering point or taking steps towards that, just like other military installations. And this is basically a resolution allowing them to take their own, from inside.
I appreciate, okay, I appreciate the explanation. I'd like to get this moved forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. And so, any other questions? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This passes. Thank you for your explanation. Move forward then to item number 11. This is the update and presentation on the Upper Colorado River Authority Stormwater Master Plan. A presentation today by a group including our city engineer, Clinton Bailey, and Stephen Brown with the Upper Colorado River Authority, and Chuck Brown with the Upper Colorado River Authority.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Mayor. I promised I'd be careful not to steal Chuck's show here, so if I could turn the clock back to about 2008, when this program first started, our stormwater management plan in San Angelo, the unfunded federal mandate, stormwater quality mandate, which was a result of the 1972 Clean Water Act and the 1987 amendment to that act, the Water Quality Act. We submitted a stormwater management plan to the TCEQ, which was approved. And if you'll remember, in that plan, we had set aside funding for stormwater quality improvements projects. We wanted to be able to measure stormwater quality in San Angelo. So, we started talking with UCRA and developed a program of installing monitoring stations in our drainage ways so that we could see what was going past there in rain events. We did that installation under an interlocal agreement with UCRA. We've done the monitoring. We've built a model as a result of that. And as a result of all of the modeling, the UCRA has put together a document with recommendations for some of these stormwater quality improvements projects in various locations. So, we, they've completed the document. It's a thorough account of the work that has been done by UCRA. And I probably should leave it at that for now, but we're proceeding along with those activities. And I'll let Stephen talk just a little bit about the development of this and then Chuck will follow up with the presentation of the results. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and the council. Mr. Manager, how are you?
Fine.
I'll be brief and I think you'll probably appreciate that, not given my nature normal. It's not often, ladies and gentlemen, that unfunded federal and state, federal and state mandates are, give us positive results. More often than not, they do not, as we all in the public sector can testify. However, occasionally, positive results can occur from these federal and state mandates. In my opinion, the stormwater master plan developed by UCRA could have some very positive and beneficial results for the city of San Angelo. It's not gospel, but it's a roadmap and it can be a guide that's based upon proven and substantiated data that will allow the city of San Angelo to better manage, control, treat, utilize its own stormwater runoff. It does contain dozens of recommendations for your consideration to improve stormwater runoff. And as a result of the three-year process, data has been collected that may prove very beneficial and provide the emphasis for an additional water supply source for the city of San Angelo. We're here today to present those results and some highlights of those results. And Chuck is going to have a PowerPoint and he'll go in greater detail in explanation of some of the issues in it.
Morning, Mayor, council. Mr. Valenzuela.
Does anybody know where the presentation may be?
Thanks, Lee.
All right. Stormwater. Wish we had a lot more of it. For those of you not familiar with that, does anybody know where that is?
Looks like Celebration Bridge to me.
That would be Celebration Bridge after a pretty significant storm event back in April of 2011, I mean, August 2011. So, as Clinton alluded to, through various congressional amendments, Clean Water Act started, TCEQ became involved in MS4 stormwater permits as a result. The big cities were first and then it came down in 2007 that the smaller cities under 100,000 had to come under the same purview. So, we can all see what stormwater can do. I mean, we know it can fill up lakes, but in an urban setting, it can do some, it can have some consequences that are not desirable. So, what is stormwater? Stormwater is the volume and timing of runoff water following a rain event and the contaminants it's carrying. And typically, we talk about stormwater, we call it a non-point source pollution, meaning it comes from all over the city. It comes from our yards, it comes from our vehicles, it comes from our everyday activities, both as citizens and as a city. So, with the non-point source pollution, obviously, you can see the macro stuff in the river that we showed at Celebration Bridge, but there's some other stuff, too. There's nutrients such as nitrogen, phosphorus, oil and grease, heavy metals, pesticides, herbicides. There's a myriad of contaminants that you may not be able to see that has, that has effects, that has adverse effects on our water quality. UCRA, as Clinton mentioned, was tasked in an interlocal agreement to prepare the final stormwater master plan for the city and an update, but in doing so, there were several steps that we had to do and I'm going to go through these fairly briefly. The first one was stormwater monitoring. The second one was to manage the water quality database. We subcontracted with Tarleton State University to do the computer modeling and I'm not going to go real into that because that's something that I'm not real familiar with and there's several appendices in this stormwater plan. If you'd like some nighttime reading, that would be something that might be, might be a good sleeper. Education outreach is a critical component and BMP structural controls. And then finally, some special projects that have kind of evolved from this, from this plan. First off, we divided the city into 45 sub-basins. These are subwatersheds that contribute to the loading of the river and eventually go downstream to our main water supply, Ivy Reservoir. Of these 45 sub-basins, we modeled 35 of them. There was 10 that we deemed non-contributing because maybe they got into a little bit of the ETJ, but they really didn't contribute to the loadings that the city of San Angelo is trying to identify. So, of these 45 sub-basins, 35 of these were modeled and you can kind of see those little red dots in there. They may be difficult to see, but those are actually the, the monitoring stations. Go over a list right quick of the monitoring stations by the number. Number one is East Angelo Draw at Pryor Street. Number two is the Reteroyo right by the water treatment plant. Number three is the North Concho River behind Central. Number four would be Sulfur Draw at Washington Street. Number five would be the large drainage just across the street from the police station. Number six is the drainage, we call the Avenue R, Avenue S drainage, that has lots of flooding problems down in that neighborhood. Seven would be the Reteroyo at Knickerbocker. Eight would be the Reteroyo at Southwest Boulevard by McDonald's. Nine is the Reteroyo on Sherwood Way by Buffalo Wild Wings. And finally, 10 is East Angelo Draw at Upton Street. So, this is what one of the stations look like. There's a couple of them that are painted tan, but most of them are orange. They're just basically job boxes. They have an ISCO 6712 sampler in it. You can see the hoses that run out of it. The big hose is actually what pulls the sample in. The small hose is actually a bubbler. And the way this thing measures flow is based upon water height. You put in the engineering properties of- You put in the engineering properties of the culvert or the stream that you're measuring, the little machine sends a bubble down. It's kind of like blowing into a straw, into a Coke straw. The less water you have, the easier it is to make the bubble go down. The more head you have on that, the harder it is to make that bubble. So this machine senses elevation through that, and based upon the engineering properties of the culvert or whatever you're set up to, you can put in an equation to get flow. It also has at the top a tipping bucket rain gauge. We want to know how much it rains, but also not how much, but the intensity and the duration. It's critical for knowing what kind of pollutants are going on, how stuff washes off, how fast it washes off, if it does wash off. This is a look at inside the sampler. It's got a rotating head, and at a pre-programmed either time or volume, this thing will take a sample. It's got 24 bottles, and some I may have set for over 15 minutes, some at the very end of the outlet of the watershed, like say the Reteroyo at the water treatment plant, that's set to go off every hour because that is a long-duration event versus something that's downtown that may be very short and very quick. This also gives us the ability to catch what we call a first flush, which is typically the dirtiest part of the storm. So we can actually analyze those first couple of bottles and see what mostly washed off, the quick stuff, the bad stuff that washed off first, because that's typically has the most impact. And then we composite the rest of the samples, if needed, over, over the storm event. That's a view of what the storm water looks like. We get a clean cooler, we composite however many samples there are, process the samples, put them in preserved bottles, ship them off to the lab as soon as possible for analysis. We had a big event in October of '12. We also had a significant event in August of '11, and I'm going to kind of look at some of this August '11 data just because it's more in the database and I'm more familiar with, with some of the characteristics of this storm. This was probably somewhere between a 25- and 50-year event. Although it didn't put a whole lot of water in our lakes, it did rain about anywhere from four to six inches within San Angelo. And there was a lot of urban flooding. There was a lot of cars washed off. There was a lot of, a lot of police work done that day. This, this plan addresses storm water quality and water quality problems, but it also addresses the urban flooding problems within San Angelo. So this is another factor in what we were wanting to do. And this right here, this is a picture of the, the Reteroyo at the water treatment plant, the very outlet right before it dumps into the South Concho River. It's a very significant event. This is the data from that August 2011 event. This is the data that gets spit out of the machines once we go and download them. The very top graph, which you'll see, is the gauge hat in feet. That's how much the water came up. So you can see it's a little over eight feet. The middle graph in the red is a cubic feet per second. That's the volume of flow, a peak of somewhere around 2,000 cubic feet per second. A cubic foot is 400, a cubic foot of water is 449 gallons a minute. The green graph down at the bottom is the rainfall, the intensity, duration, and you can see how the hydrograph kind of mimics right after the rainfall, and then even a little bit of rain that next day kind of blipped it again. The triangles you see across the top and the bottom are when the machine was actually sampling the water. Every time it's, you see one of those triangles, it took a sample. Now, one interesting things, you can look up at the very top, right above the numbers 2 RAWTP, and you can see the flow. And in parentheses, that flow is 1,851. That's how much acre-feet went by that station, almost 2,000 acre-feet of water, which is almost 10% of our municipal supply for a year, just in that event. This is some of the data that the lab sent back from this event. And really looking at the, at the water quality, the water quality is pretty good. There's a little bit of total P is phosphorus. There's, there's some phosphorus, there's nitrate, nitrite, not a whole lot. TSS is suspended solids. It's sediment, grass, dirt, leaves, anything that can float that doesn't dissolve. That's a little high, but that would be expected just because of the significance of the event. The BOD is the biochemical oxygen demand. It's basically anaerobic organisms consume oxygen in the water to, when they consume the nutrients and the pollutants that come in, that wash in, the organics. And so this is a measure of the oxygen-depleting properties of the water. That's pretty good. Like I say, the volume was 1,851 acre-feet, and you look over at the loadings, that was almost 4,000 pounds of phosphorus that went by that station. And like I say, the numbers aren't bad. The water quality was pretty decent for this. You know, the solution to pollution is dilution, and this was definitely a dilution event. But in calculating loadings, your milligrams per liter times your volume gives you a pounds of, of this, and this is what we're looking for. This is the meat of what we're looking for. We're trying to reduce our loadings. 11,500 pounds of nitrogen, almost 4 million pounds of sediment and grass and that kind of stuff. So that gives you an idea of just the, the size of the storm and the amount of pollutants that occur. This is the modeling. The, the next thing that happened was we went and gathered a lot of data. We gathered from, starting in summer of 2010, I believe, we ended up with 21 unique events that we sampled, which is pretty good considering the drought that we were through. And you can see this, this is the, this is what the modelers at Tarleton use. This is the land use. So what they do is they go in, they look at the land use, they look at the impervious, they look at the soils, they look at the water quality data, and then the model can be a predictive tool for the city to use to say, okay, well, what's going to happen if we put in a couple of hundred-acre subdivision up here? What can we expect as far as runoff-wise? What can we expect as far as loadings? Because they can look at different residential areas that have been sampled and say, okay, well, we can expect X out of this. We may get a lot more nitrogen phosphorus over here, or if we're looking at something more downtown, we may be looking at more oil and grease or metals in the water or something like that. Okay? Another component, which is very important, is education outreach. Teaching all of us how to better go about our daily lives so that we don't cause as much impact to our water bodies. Kristi Uchukwu, who is our education director, is very active in this. She goes everywhere all the time. One of our main focus groups, and we have several, is, is school kids. There is a education center that has been established just for this on Oak Street by the river, and she brings tons and tons of people in. Civic events, we have a presence at civic events, just to, once again, get out the, the water quality idea, quality, quantity conservation. City staff. We, Mike Hitchcock from the Parks Department and I are intimately aware of the vortex separator down at the ponds. We go in every now and then and clean it out, and, and what I want to get to with this slide is Kristi has visited each city department and has come up with a list of practices that they can do in their daily routines to, to better manage their storm water and the actual city staff's impact. And I can promise you, the impact is noticed. I've seen it several times. Most recently, a couple of days ago, there was a couple of city staff, parks guys that were, were fertilizing over in the Old Town, in the historic district. And I was watching them stop when they would go across sidewalks and stop when they would get to the pavement, so they wouldn't spray the fertilizer on the pavement. And I think that's a direct effect of the education outreach, just bringing a knowledge of what you can do to help. So that, that was impressive. I was really happy to see that. Another thing we do is, is try to educate public officials. We had a, this is Mayor New actually, with Carol Ann Bonds and some city staff and UCRAs staff recognizing our group Aqua Squad. We have some seventh graders every couple of years that we, pretty much Kristi sends through boot camp and teaches them everything there is to know about water, and they become our ambassadors for, for water quality projects, and they, they come to many events that we Advertising, more public education outreach. You've probably seen some of the billboards around town. A couple of those on the top just are kind of trying to get you an impact, try to slap you in the face. There's one of a dog that people freak out on and go, oh, my gosh. But really, I mean, it's, it's an eye-opener. Somebody fertilizing the water, somebody washing their car on the lake. It's, it's a visual impact that says, hey, wait, maybe I can do something to make a difference. We also put some flyers in the water bills. I can assure you that's the only thing we added to the water bill, was just a flyer. All right. BMP structural controls. This is, uh, this is over across from Windland Manufacturing. This is one that UCRAs and the city built back in the early 2000s. We started these projects in about the mid 90s. We built five of them, five different, five different structures. And I'll kind of go through these. This is a civic, basically what that, I mean, this is over at Windland on 11th Street. What these things do is they just filter the water. They're just big rock baskets. But there's, there's several different types of BMPs that we'll show. This is one of them. Another one is the vortex separator. It's kind of, it's an aqua swirl, and it basically swirls the water, traps the sediment at the bottom, traps the cups and the grease and floatable stuff at the top, and discharges a clean midstream product, a cleaner. Cleaning out Brentwood Pond. This was basically, this is a retention pond, and the, the idea is, is you get the storm water in, you fill it up, you let it sit, you let it settle out. Most of the pollutants will settle out. The next storm comes replaces good water with bad water. We removed about 9,000 cubic yards of material from this pond and increased its capacity by over 80%. This was done in about 2000, I believe. With this project, we've identified 23 sites for structural, potential structural controls. Some of these sites are a little bit out of the scope, meaning they are, are huge projects that maybe want to be tackled by different grant funding or some, it's not something that the storm water program is going to be able to fund. Some of these are going to be multimillion-dollar projects. We have six of these that are, I don't want to say shovel-ready, but they're conceptual layout with budgets to them. This one right here is actually 140-acre, and this is conceptual, 140-acre pond just about, right next to the Rio Concho Sports Complex on Pulliam Draw. Not only would this serve to mitigate a whole lot of storm water, but you could possibly use it to irrigate the ball fields, too, or augment your municipal supply, your irrigation supply with it. Like I say, that's a big project. Price tag on it is around $3 million. So it's, it's something that's in the, in the plan, but it's more in the appendices of this is some, this is some big-picture stuff what we could do. Another one is a large retention-detention pond along the Reteroyo by South Chadburn. Originally, we had looked at this and thought that this could be something that would really improve water quality. And then the more we got to looking at it, we realized that there was a whole lot of water going by here, and we may need to do something bigger. So we realized, after we looked at the data for 2010 in such a dry time, that there was enough water flowing by that this watershed could possibly supply the city with 50% of their municipal water supply every year at a minimum. And let me show you that data. This is the data from 2012 from that Reteroyo at the water treatment plant. All of these are different events that have happened through 2012 and the rain, and just like I showed you earlier. But if you look up the very top right on the flow, 8,707 acre-feet of water, that's this year that has gone by, that station. So with that in mind, in talking with the city staff, what we initiated was a large engineering study to look at the feasibility of doing a very large retention pond on the Reteroyo in this area. This area is all farmland down there in the floodplain, much of it. And what it could do is it could augment city supply and possibly add 50, 60% of the municipal supply right there. It's very convenient. It's right by the water treatment plant. Right now, currently, there is an engineering group that is doing a feasibility study with cost estimates, and if it can be done. There's been a geotechnical investigation already completed. I would expect that report to come out by the middle end of April. So this is just one of the added benefits of the program, a kind of a byproduct that we said, wow, look at what we've got right here. And we all knew it, but we really didn't know how much. So now, now it's going to be quantified, and hopefully it'll come to fruition. With that, I'll turn it over. Any questions? I might add also, we have a few of these copies of the storm water report. It's going to be posted on our website. The website's right there. If you, if anybody would like to download it in PDF, I think it'll be up in the next couple of days.
Super questions? I think you were thorough.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You look a little cleaner than you did. Not much.
I'd rather be in the mud.
All right, item number 12. This is the acceptance of the fiscal year 2012 actuarial report, and it's submitted by Jason Martin of Towers Watson, and they're looking for approval of their recommendation and authorizing funding for the self-insurance fund. And we're presented today by our Director of Human Resources, Lisa Marley.
Good morning, Council, Mayor, City Manager. Today, we will be presenting our actuarial study for the upcoming year, and so I would like to introduce to you Jason Martin. He is our actuarial from Towers Watson, and when he's finished, we also have some other information that we'd like to present on our results of the self-insurance fund.
Good morning. Thank you for having me and the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Jason Martin with Towers Watson, and I helped with the city's actuarial report this last year. So today, we're going to go through the results of the study. Just some limitations, just saying that if you want to rely on the results here, it'd be best to go ahead and review the whole report. This is really just more of a summary of what the findings were. A few things we'll go through, we'll look at a little bit of the background of your program, some of the objectives of the actuarial report, and then the findings, and then a little bit of discussion around variability and how these estimates can change over time. So in terms of the background, the city became a self-insured back in 1987 with their automobile and liability programs, and then added the workers' compensation program in 1988. To give you an idea of the current self-insured retention, also, you can think of it as your deductible, what you're retaining for every claim that comes through. It's at a half a million dollar level right now for workers' compensation and for police officials and law enforcement. For property, it's a lower retention of 25,000 to 10,000. And then for general liability and auto liability, you really don't have any excess insurance purchased. However, you do have some protections in terms of being a municipality, so there's some limitations in place from that perspective. So in terms of the actuarial report, the objective of it really is to give you an unpaid estimate. So in terms of all the claims that you've had out there, how much do you still owe on those claims is really what we're trying to do. And that's an estimate at September 30th of 2012. And then we also provide you a forecast, and so for losses that are expected to happen from October 1 of 2012 through September 30th of 2013, what do we project those losses to be for each of these different coverages within your, your retention and your deductible layer? This analysis is performed for each of your coverages, and we also give an idea of some of the surplus analysis, too, at the end. So some basic terminology before we get into it, we won't go through a lot of detail, but basically, probably 90% of what our report does is comes up with what we call an ultimate loss. So in the box in the bottom, we say an ultimate loss is equal to basically three pieces that are in there. One is the paid amount. So for the claims you've had, you've already maybe made some payments on those. The other piece of it is a case reserve. So whenever a claim comes in, the adjusters and claim adjusters look at those claims and set up, here's how much we think that claim is worth, and they put up so much money for that case reserve. The third piece is where we come in, and that's what our report is trying to find out, is how much more needs to be added on top of those liabilities? And that's called IBNR, or incurred but not reported. So it's what you know, but there's still some uncertainty around those claims. You could have a broken finger that might cost $500 for one person, but for someone else, they might have, you know, surgery or some other things involved, it might cost $5,000. So as these claims start to play out, and as they start to go through more discovery about what's going to happen and what kind of procedures, or how long someone might be out of work, or what's going to actually end up being the ultimate payment, you can have this additional development starts to bubble up. So we look at your historical losses, how those have trended over time, and look at what projected trends are going to be to come up with what we think your ultimate loss estimate. So the ultimate is, when all your claims are closed out, you've paid all those dollars, how much did you pay in total? So it's, right now, it's made up of three pieces, then. So your unpaid estimate is September 30th. The far-right column shows a discounted number. In the middle is a discount, is undiscounted. Basically, the discounted is, is accounting for time value of money. So it's saying, you've got these workers' compensation claims, in this case, 1.5 million of workers' compensation undiscounted. Because those claims are going to be paid out right away, some of them might be paid over the next year, two years, three years. In some cases, there's still claims that are open that are 20 years old. So it's discounting those losses back to give you a discounted estimate. And right now, the rate that's being discounted is only 0.6%. So it's not a lot of benefit from that discount, but there's some, some pickup from that. In terms of the liability and property coverages, that unpaid estimate on a discounted basis is coming in around 825. coming in around $825,000. So in total, it's around a little bit less than 2.3 million. In terms of reconciling, you kind of gave me an idea of where you were 12 months before this number. There's a lot of numbers on this slide, but basically what it's doing, that the top line is showing you where you were in the past. So if we just stay with the far right column, the total, 1.775 million, that's what your total unpaid estimate was at 9/30 of 2011. So as we move from that number, 12 months later, we have new losses that have come on the books. New things, new claims have happened during that 12-month period. And we project that to be 1.1 million. So you're going to add 1.1 million until you're 1.7 million of losses. From that, we made some revisions to our prior estimate where, for maybe we thought your ultimate loss was $100, and now some of them might have changed to $90, some of them might have changed to $110. Just as we know more about those claims and they start to develop out, sometimes things can come up higher than what we're expecting, sometimes lower than expecting. So we try and true those up based on the new information we have 12 months later. That ultimate impact was an increase of 160,000. So that adds that number as well. The third piece of it is then taking off the payments that you've then dispersed over the last 12 months. And so what that ends up doing is it takes off a little over 700,000. So that's where we end up then at the 2.3 million in your total unpaid estimate. So overall, it's an increase of about 550,000. I guess one of the things to note is it's a big percent increase. And even the dollar amount, it's a big increase. 550,000 is a lot of dollars coming through. Some of it is also kind of a timing issue, because the numbers that were changing was 161,000. So the reason why it's up to 550,000 though, is the new losses that are coming on the books versus those that are getting paid out, that there's not as much being paid out as what's coming on. Had you paid out one other big claim of 200,000, then your increase would have only been 350,000. So it's, it's not that things are that much worse, it's just more, there's more coming relative to what got paid out. So the forecast for the next 12 months, so October 12 to September 30, 2013, on a discounted basis, is around 615,000 for workers' compensation and for the liability and property coverages, we're coming in a little over 500,000. We also provide estimates at different confidence levels. And a way to think about a confidence level is what, when we're giving you our initial estimate, our initial unpaid estimate, it's kind of what we think of at the expected level. So it means, it's not quite flipping a coin in terms of a 50/50 chance of it being heads or tails. It's, it's a little bit closer towards maybe like a 60 percent chance. So it means, you know, six out of every 10 years, this number will be enough, that unpaid estimate would be enough money. But there's going to be four out of those 10 years where the number's going to be higher than that. So we provide confidence levels, or what we call here a risk margin. So it means, if you want to be 75 percent confident that that number's enough, so seven and a half out of 10 years, or 90 percent confident, so nine out of 10 years that that number is enough. It doesn't mean that there aren't going to be years that it ends up going over that, it just means that it gives you a better idea of kind of, to cover some of the volatility that can come through the numbers. And we'll show some pictures of how that volatility's come through historically. So for workers' compensation, to get to a 90 percent confidence level, it's adding another $600,000 to that unpaid estimate we looked at a minute ago. And for property and liability, it's also adding another 600,000. Is that helpful, or any questions on the risk mar, that's a little bit of a, not an everyday terminology, so.
Well, walk back and make sure that you tie together some numbers for me, because I must have missed, misunderstood something.
Okay.
So you got 600 and 600. Go back to your 500 and something number. Tell me why I'm trying to tie those together and why I shouldn't be, okay?
Okay. So for the 500, like the forecast that we were talking, right. So what we have are, we have two different estimates. One is the unpaid estimate. So in this case, the unpaid estimate, let's go back and see if we can, we were coming in.
See right there at the 557?
Right. So this is, the 557 is the change in your unpaid estimate. So we were at 1.77 million, and now it's at 2.33 million, right?
Right.
And so that's just how that's changed over time. What the risk margin is intended to do is to say that of these estimates that we have here, if you want to be 90 percent confident that that's enough money, then you needed to add to that other number, the 2.3 million, you need to add to that amount to get to a higher confidence level, is the idea with that.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of where the funds are set in place for workers' compensation, you have funds set aside for those, to pay those claims, and you have another fund set aside for the property and liability. And so we look at our, the current fund assets, and then also looking at our undiscounted unpaid estimates, or I'm sorry, discounted unpaid estimates, to see how much surplus is there. So for workers' compensation, the surplus estimate is around $150,000. For property and liability, it's higher at a 1.2 million. And we equate those to some ratios down at the bottom, just saying, if you take that unpaid relative to your surplus for workers' compensation, it's a ratio of about 9.7. For property and liability, it's a lot lower at the .69. The third column is kind of a benchmark ratio. So it's saying, ideally, maybe you want that to be less than three.
On a combined basis?
Well, for, in this case, we're treating each one separately, is there each different funds.
I understand, but I mean, the less than three, is that individually, less than three or combined? In other words, when one's .69, can the other one run a little high and, and the average be less than three and be in a healthy place? Or is it really better to look at them one at a time and make sure each is less than 3.0?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think some of it depends on how you want to manage those funds. If you want them to stand alone, then you might want to let them stand alone. If it's more of, we have these two funds, but really what we're concerned about is the aggregate, then I would probably look more in the aggregate to kind of see where you play out. The thing about these forecast, or these, these ratios is that they're really, if you were a large insurance company where you have huge volume and lots of claims, and it doesn't take much to swing, or it's harder to swing those numbers.
That was her pistol.
One side or the other.
Okay, I'm just telling you, it'd be good.
Alright. So with your funds, with the, with the smaller volume, then these ratios might be a little bit tighter than you want, if you were to go out and compare within the insurance industry, what are those ratios that they're riding to? So just some perspective with that.
Okay, thank you.
So we talked a little bit about volatility, and we talked about the surplus. With the workers' compensation, if you think about your retention, a half million dollars, there's only 150,000 in surplus. It just takes one retention limit claim to wipe that, I mean, it doesn't even take, you know, a full retention limit claim to kind of eat through that surplus. And in terms of the stability of the numbers, historically over time, this is a look, this is a graph of what we call a loss cost. So it's basically a way to normalize across the year, so you can kind of compare what your costs have been. And so it takes the losses you've had in a year and divides it through by a payroll. So in this case, it's per hundred dollars a payroll. So you can kind of see, okay, per, per payroll dollar, what am I cost from one year to the next? And there's a pretty wide range, anywhere from in '03 being, you know, a little over 50 cents to $2.50 in, in 2007. So when you have large claims that come through, it causes these spikes in the system. And you're going to see those coming through. And that's really what we see when you see the high points. So when we're giving our forecast for 2013, we're looking at historically what has happened, what are those costs? And then we look and see, well, how are those trending over time? And what do we expect those costs to be over the next year? So from that, we've come up with an estimate that's a little over $1.50 per hundred dollars a payroll. So it's taking into account that you do have some larger spikes, but then you also have some favorable time periods too. So we don't know what that year's going to hold in terms of how that claim experience could turn out. And so we're looking at more of a long-term average. There's a little bit of an upward trend, so we trend those older years to current dollars to come up with that forecasted pick, is how that kind of plays through. I guess it's the volatility, I think, is one of the things that makes it a little more challenging in terms of, you pretty much know that number's not going to be right. It's either going to be too high or too low. The idea is to try and get you to about the right spot.
Well, multi-year, you know, a multi-year line would, would make, I mean, at least it's not, when you look at it over time, it's not crazy. And that's what you just said.
Right.
Each year, you don't know what it's going to be, but at least it's not running like this.
Yeah, last thing is, is we need a three-year moving average here. Because there's, there's got to be a point, I mean, you, page 10, you were saying at 75 percent confidence, this is what, it's somewhere in there, about 65 percent, somewhere 67 percent, somewhere in there, you can collect it each year, and you can cover a bad year. Somewhere, there's a balance.
Right.
And if it doesn't cover, then we raise our percent higher, and we target. And each year, we collect too much, but we're collecting too much for the bad year that we know is going to happen, because there's averages. And I don't see that number, and you're not going to make that guess, but I would like to see that number, and I'd like to make that guess. I just don't have the statistical packages up here to figure it out.
In terms of how much to collect to cover the bad year?
Yeah, how much should we collect? That confidence level is, I think, where we go on page 10. It's okay, at about a 69, 70 percent confidence, what do we need to collect here? Because we're collecting too much in a bad year, we would nail it, we would cover ourselves. And if we didn't, we need to move that up a bit. And it, and the reason I go with the confidence levels, because the pricing all changes, and we just ask you to figure it out. And then we'd know what to do next year, how much we need to collect. And we'd always have a surplus until something knocks it out, but over time, it'd work out. There's a chance it wouldn't, but over time, it would have a job.
Yeah, and you can book at, you know, we can give it confidence levels at a higher confidence level of 90 percent's not enough, and I guess in terms of.
But that's for one year.
That's for one.
90 percent for one year, I'm looking at, Alvin brought it up, and I agree with him, we need to be looking at moving averages three years, because it all, it all evens out. We might have a bad year.
When you had a bad year in 2007, Ms. Marley, when you had 2007, 2010, were you in a place where you funded that? Or were you in a place where you had to go get money?
Right, yeah. And those confidence levels that we provide, they are on your historical year, so it's looking at, of those claims that you have still outstanding, plus your forecast year. And it combines the two together to come up with a risk margin for those combined bases. So it's not just your forecast year, but it's your historical years too.
Okay, and so what I'm, I guess what I'm saying here to the rest of the council and anybody else is that I would think about collecting too much money and putting it aside based on these confidence levels, so that we can withstand the storms.
Well, and again, though, look, don't forget to look at actual, not just theoretical. But, I mean, again, I'm asking her, did you have enough money in '07 and '10 when you had a bad year? If you did, then what you're doing is working pretty well. If you didn't, then it gives you an idea that you need to step up your confidence level. And that's really what I'm describing, so, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
What I would like to see is a cause and effect possibly of your peaks and valleys. You know, I realize this is workman's comp, but looking at, you know, illness claims also, what causes these peaks and valleys? You know, is it a weather event where workers, you know, long hours contribute to a workman's comp claim? Or a major weather event that caused unsafe conditions that causes your peaks and valleys? The same as with illnesses, whether we have a bird flu or, you know, something like this, or our health program, you know, if people are getting overweight or whatever, that causes these peaks and valleys, that gives us a better idea of what maybe the next event could or could not be, depending on what's booked in the city, heavier business and stuff like that. Is that possible?
Yes, yeah, I think most of the claims are coded with type of cause of loss, so you can look and see, you know, is there some type of an underlying trend where you have more slip and falls? Or maybe all your slip and falls are happening at certain times of the year, where, you know, maybe it's the ice outside, or you can kind of maybe even drill down to particular locations to see, is it a certain location that you're having this problem? I mean, it's great to have tons of data to help to kind of find a trend. I think that most of these peaks are really caused by just one or two claims that are causing it to spike up, that are causing, you know, just these big, big increases. But what you're mentioning is definitely a helpful analysis, that, you know, even if you have these one or two that are one-off, you can still find an underlying trend with them too.
I want to be sure that particularly, I've been asking you a lot of questions, I need to make sure I let you finish your trend, your, your presentation, to make sure you're not answering some of our questions, I guess, before we ask them. But even adding on to what Ms. Farmer said, another analysis would be, are they happening in certain departments? Are they happening under certain supervisors? Are they happening under a certain hiring regime so that, is it new employees, or is it people that have been here for a while? And so there's a whole lot to do with that side of it too.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, but I'm sorry, I think maybe I'm not allowing you to have enough fluidity in your presentation.
Oh, no, it's fine, I appreciate the question, because they're great questions, and we'd be happy to help out with any type of a drill down analysis to kind of go into more detail with any of these too.
Very good, thank you.
Actually, most of the other slides are really just kind of showing kind of the same idea, but for general liability. Here, more volatility in terms of bigger swings, and, and again, it's, you know, big claims that come through. But it's just this, that in this case here, where we're picking our forecast for 2013, we really are picking more off of kind of these, these higher points that are coming through as opposed to, we're giving more weight to them in terms of making that pick. So this is probably a little bit more conservative pick, just because of that extreme volatility at this one stage. And then same for auto liability, just to look at what those costs look like. 2012, there was a large, over $245,000 claim that came through, and that's where it's causing that big spike there. So we're not giving as much weight to that one big claim, since it's one of, an unusual claim that has come through. In terms of the variability of the estimates, when we look and we see there's lots of swings from, from one year to another, you know, just not a huge volume of claims coming through, so that can impact it, because it could take just one claim to kind of swing the numbers from one way to another. It's also a relatively long-tailed line of business, is kind of the term in terms of, it can take 30 years for some of these claims to close out. And then, you know, other events that can impact these, just external events or internal events, just the way these claims are set up when they're initially set up, since we're looking at historical patterns to kind of project what's going to happen in the future. If there's changes in how these claims are set up, or, or how they're handled, that can impact our estimates as well. And then, you know, jury verdicts, inflation, other external environmental factors can impact what, you know, how things trend over time and what kind of results you'll see. You know, in terms of just volatility of your own numbers, just one half million dollar claim, what it would do to your current unpaid estimates is a 33 percent increase in, in your unpaid for workers' compensation, over 60 percent for the liability lines. That's all I have. Are there other questions or anything else to discuss?
I would love to see the data on, on what's the cause of most of these claims. And, you know, not specific names and such, but I would like to see that, because again, you know, back from what, what I've been through in my, my work, we were able to cut our workers' comp and loss dramatically over the course of, it was a three-year program, and we dramatically cut that. And that was with a brand-new program, and it created an incentive program for employees. And so everybody got to win. Employees got to win, the company got to win, and at the end of the day, with us, I mean, the citizens would be able to win too, hopefully with a, a lower rate, and, you know, where we can, we can carry that all back. You know, but it's, it's a, it's a big deal, and it's, you got to look at it from 12,000 feet and then be able to break down into about five feet.
Right.
And, and start tackling those, each one of those where you can, you know, keep, preventative maintenance is, is going to be one of the keys there, is to, to keep things from happening, to do as much as you can for that. And that goes to, I don't know what, who are, do we have a safety director for the, you know, it's kind of starting with that and working bottom, you know, top-down on that thing, so.
Right, want to come back up?
Are these amounts different from previous years that are posted?
She's, she's going to ask for a specific number, let's ask her, let's ask her how that number moved, okay?
Okay, this is, this is my part of the presentation, that I hope will answer some of your questions. I don't have all the drill down data by claim, but I do have some closer numbers that I think will show what we're doing. If, if I can go through this, and then let me see if I can answer your questions for you. Obviously, we have four different types of self-insured claims from the risk management side of the house. That's our workers' comp, our auto liability and collision, general liability and property insurance. This, hopefully you can see it, shows the last five years of our workers' comp. If you look at, in '07, that number was 156 claims. The, it has steadily gone down since that point. We had a safety manager that was on staff, and he left in '08. We went for a little bit of time without one, and now we have a safety officer again. And he's been very instrumental in getting out into the field and making sure that these that these programs are followed by our employees. Over the five-year average, it shows one hundred and thirty-seven. Looking at this fiscal year, starting October one, two thousand and twelve to present, we've had forty workers' comp injuries. That averages about eight a month, and at last year, this time, we were sitting at eleven a month. So we are under where we were last year in these numbers. We do have a stop loss, so to speak, for workers' comp, which is with Midwest employers casualty. This does handle all of our claims that go in excess of five hundred thousand. In order to have that insurance each year, we have a premium of sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. These are our auto claims, the same five-year period. If you look, those are not going the same direction as workers' comp. I think part of this is because the fleet has grown. We do have more trucks on the, on the ground. But also, we are, there's just more people on the road, and we're seeing some real trends going in that direction. And one of the things that we're coming forward with our unfunded priorities, that we are going to talk about at budget time, is a program that will help us monitor some of the auto claims, try to keep those numbers down. Now, where we sit right now, it's forty-five this fiscal year accidents. That's averaging about nine a month, and last year, we were sitting at twelve a month. So again, we're under, but this is not the kind of number we want to see. We'd like for that to go down.
We average, we've averaged this fiscal year, nine?
Nine auto liability. No, that can be city, city vehicles or pub, or the public. You know, if we're responsible for an auto claim, if they, I'm trying to think of an example where we might, it might not be a city vehicle that's involved. It's just the public's and vehicle. But yes, we've had forty-five this fiscal year. General liability, again, those numbers are going down. That's a good number to see. We're sitting right now at eight this fiscal year, which is an average of one point six per month, and last year, we were sitting at four per month. So we are seeing a decrease in those claims. Those would be, you know, like a water main, if there was some kind of damage to, to a public citizen's property. And then these are property claims. Those are pretty flat, a little bit of a decrease over the last five years. We have had twenty this fiscal year, which is an average of four a month, which puts us under the six a month where we were last year.
But those claims that occurred last year were expensive-
Correct.
-as a trend.
Yes, if you look at the numbers, it's, it's big.
It's really hammering you.
Right. So these are the funding recommendations that coincide with the numbers from Towers Watson, in order for us to fund our, fund at the ninety percent confidence level.
Last year, we funded at a ninety percent confidence level?
And that number was?
I'm afraid I don't have that. I don't think I have that in any of the stuff that I have with me, regretfully.
And the, the same on the GL auto and property, ninety percent level, and we did fund at the ninety percent level?
And I want, I believe John told me this morning, it was about a nine percent increase over last year's numbers.
One of the things that's occurring is that the person at the podium is up to bat because of illness for the person that was supposed to be at the podium. So that's, that gives you some, some reason for, there's a, there's someone-
Don't throw things at you.
Yeah.
Please, don't shoot this messenger.
But we don't know if we exceeded, so we predicted ninety percent, and we went over it. Wouldn't we have to add money to that fund?
Well, you said it's a nine percent increase, so I mean, I think you are-
Over what?
Right. You have, she thinks it's a nine percent increase, and Mr. Alexander, I would, I would agree with your, your rationale. And I think, again, last year's claims were expensive. That's what's, that's what's causing you to have to boost your funds to, to put yourself in a place to, to be at the ninety percent confidence level.
Correct.
You agreeing with that, Mr. Dane?
Yes, in general. The specifics for how the money flows have not been part of this presentation, and that would be another somewhat in-depth conversation about how we actually get money into these funds. With this, it's been very much focused on how those-
I think there's general support. Ms., Ms., Mar, I'm sorry, sir. Ms. Marley, what's the critical timing on this process? In other words, if we said, hey, bring us a little more stuff in two weeks, and let us look at this year versus last year, and some of that, is that, what does that do to us?
We'd be all right to do that.
Are y'all okay with that? To know a little bit more about where you were a year ago, and the nine percent increase, and some of those things?
Just, you know, there's a-
It's just a progress report, you know, how we're doing, or not doing.
But I like a fund, fund that builds, to protect us against bad years and increases and things like, I like a fund that builds.
Well, of course, okay, and I, and I agree now-
And I want to know where we are on that. Are we doing something like that? That's, you know, when Harold Dominguez was here, we talked about it. And, and part of what happens when a manager leaves is he leaves with the plan. And so I want to make sure we get back on track.
Okay, but that is what this is. This is a fund balance that's supposed to take care of you through, through years that go, go good or go bad. And the only thing you have to be careful about, if everything you do is creating additional funding, what you're doing is telling the taxpayer, I'd like a little more, please. You know, I can't-
Well, if we build a fund, our insurance rates can drop. Is that right?
Not necessarily. Could we tab back to the slide-
We're self-insured. So, I mean, the only-
That's a good point. If you don't change the terms upon, that cause the co-insurance or the insurance you buy that covers you for claims over a certain amount, if you don't change those terms, your rates don't go down.
Right.
Just having larger reserves does not decrease the cost that sixty-four thousand dollar cost.
The only way-
What you do is change that threshold.
You'd have to say, okay, we'll insure up to seven hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever. Notwithstanding, you may have to say that anyway, because over time, insurance rates increase, and so you may at some point choose a higher deductible just to control your costs. So again, I'm just saying, what we want to do is do what's reasonable, but a ninety percent confidence level's pretty reasonable. I want to be careful that we don't have, you know, that we don't spend too much effort on big reserves across a lot of different categories, because it'll decrease the ability to reduce property taxes. It'll, you know, this is a balance. You've got a lot of things to, to think through. And I don't think you're wrong-headed. I'm just trying to get you, I'm, I'm giving you a different side of the coin, is all.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm still not going to get off of the, we got, we got to tackle the root cause on this stuff.
Concur.
I mean, that's what we've got to be tackling. We've got to bring that number down.
Just bring the expense down.
Bring the expense down, that's right.
That's nothing to do with the funding philosophy.
Has absolutely nothing to do with that.
Yeah, you just could make those numbers smaller by not having to pay some.
By not having as much.
Well, and one of the things that you brought up, and I wanted to make sure I'm commented on, but it wasn't part of the presentation, was that we, in the past, we've had a safety incentive program, but it went by the wayside back in two thousand and eight. And so we have built a new safety incentive program that we are trying to introduce, and we really believe, if you look at the numbers, that really did keep our, our costs down before. So we hope to present that to the city.
I think Mr. Morrison's trying to, to make a statement or ask you a question.
I really don't see that last year or the year before is relevant to this, because what we have got coming in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, our entire community's about to change. With the influx of more people that's coming in, with the jobs, with the employment, I'm afraid we're going to be starting over, I'm afraid we're going to lose some of our employes. We'll be starting with more. There's going to be more traffic. I just think that we have got a tremendous amount of opportunity that's going to face us in the next year. And in the next year, that makes what happened last year, and in eleven, and in ten, irrelevant. And I think that we need to stay with the ninety percent funding to protect ourselves from the unknowns that we've got coming. And I'm perfectly satisfied with the ninety percent level.
And the funding levels that you see in front of you, the actual dollars. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do want to mention also that what y'all are talking about is running the money. I know that there's a lot that we have to do on our part also to address risk management, to make sure that we do have programs in place that'll be actually reducing some of the numbers that we're seeing here also. So you talk about the root cause, absolutely. You have to look at the root cause. What is causing the, the problem? What can we do to actually reduce that? Is there's any type of incentive program, safety programs, that can be put in play that will actually adjust those numbers down? And those are all things actually that we'll be looking at also, and make sure we implement and get these numbers down, of course.
Okay, all of this has been a good discussion. I see one council member that would like to move this forward as it's presented. I don't think I've got a consensus for that, though. So I think what we'd like to see is for you to come back in two weeks, and just let us get a feel for what, how, what level we funded it for before, what the increase is. So if anyone wants to say, I don't want to fund it at two million, six seventy-five, I'd rather have an eighty-five percent confidence level at two million, five, or whatever, they could make that statement. And, or I want more than a ninety percent confidence level, or so forth. So I do think, in general, the council would like to see a little bit of history and understand what, how they want to move forward, okay? So if you don't mind, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we will be leaving to go to a, a chamber function at eleven something. I'd like to take a short break, but I want you to understand that I'll be calling you back in just a few minutes. I really am trying to just have a short break, okay? Morning. Let me call the meeting back to order, please. The first two items were discussion items, but I still dropped the ball on that. I, even though they're discussion items and didn't require a vote, I could, could ask for public input on those items. So I have item number eleven was the Upper Colorado River Authority Stormwater Master Plan. Item number twelve was this actuarial report and the look at the Workers' Compensation Fund, Property Casualty Funds. And so at this time, let me go ahead and open up either of those two items, eleven or twelve, for public comment, before I move us on to thirteen, okay? Mr. Richardson, you're welcome to join, come up to the mic.
Bill Richardson, one, one of the things that was mentioned in the stormwater report was the condition of the water in the, in the North Saskatchewan River from Old Sea Fisher down to Bell Street. And one of them mentioned a high level of E C, E. Coli bacteria in the water. And I would like to know if that's a constant, and whether it would create a health hazard. We have some events coming up with the opening of the downtown, downtown park, where we have canoe races and paddle races.
I don't think I agree with what you heard, but-
No, what, this is what I read.
Okay, I understand.
It's in the, it's in the report.
But when he just got through giving us the presentation, he talked about the phosphates, the nitrates, the, those kinds of things. And I will assure you that, that the health level is fine, but I will also make sure that I follow up on your request.
Yeah, it, it's in the report.
Okay.
Just, I depart after the executive summary. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my copy of the report and to give you the exact page, but it's on. But it is there, and I'm just wondering if it's a constant, and it can cause a health risk. I don't want to rain on anybody's parade or anything like that.
No, the fact is, if it was a problem, the point I'm making to you is, these gauges create a report, goes to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. When we are out of bounds, if we are out of bounds, and when we are out of bounds, and if there is ever any concern about a public health issue, then immediately, we're put on notice, or even told, here's what's wrong, get this fixed. And so that's why I'm saying to you, I'm confident that there's not a problem with a constant level, or with an, with a, with an unhealthy level, or those things. So I'm answering your question directly, because I know we have not been notified by the TCEQ that we're out of, out of bounds. Nonetheless, I'm also saying to you that I'll take your comment at face value, and make sure that I ask, and make sure that we pursue through staff that our E. coli level is safe, and that everything is in a good place.
Yeah, I just want a reassurance, because this mentioned in the report. It's in writing.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Other public comment? Come on up.
For the record, Jim Ryan.
Thank you.
And thank you. During the stormwater report, they went to the monitoring stations we have now. And I have brought this up before, but I suggest again, we need one more monitoring station a little farther east of the Bell Street Dam. If TCEQ comes down sometime in the future and says, oh, our monitoring station shows something outrageous, we want to be able to show them, whoa, right here, as far east as we're responsible for, here's our data. It ain't our fault if Farmer Brown dumped a load of fertilizer in the river. And, just, just that suggestion. I, I think we ought to cover ourselves on that.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
And that was a council request. I remember making that request, that we don't have a cumulative final gauge that says, of all these streams, this is the result. I thought they had agreed to go ahead and maybe set one up, but-
I think, I think what we get out of that is that Mr. Valenzuela, Mr. Dixon, need to be sure that between the, back to, again, the TCEQ, and the Water Master, and, and the, even the USGS, that amongst those agencies and us, we make sure that, that we are covered. For when it leaves San Angelo, Texas, this is the condition it was in, and I think that's what you're asking for.
And I wish we could report it. I wish we could say, this is where we started in two thousand and nine, and this is where we are, and graphs. And Ms. Farmer has a comment as well.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Farmer?
A point of clarification. Those monitors, those gauges, we elected as a council to put those in. Was it at our expense, or did we have some shared expense from the state?
I'm sure it's ours. I think it's ours.
I know it was ours. I don't know that we didn't get any shared expense. Do you know anything about that?
There is some state funding there somewhere.
That's what I thought.
But I don't think it's covering everything.
But it was a council decision, and to spend the money because of the importance.
Yes.
Thank you.
And it may not be state funding. It, it may be some U.C.R.A.
Okay.
Program-type money.
Okay. Is there any further public input on items eleven and twelve, before I move us on to thirteen? Okay. Let me move us on then to item number thirteen. This is the consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a revocable license agreement for an awning. And our presentation is, I love this, by our interim director of Development Services, A.J. Favre.
Thank you.
And I saw where you have an interim senior planner.
We do. We have a lot of interims.
Outstanding.
This request for us today is very typical of the other awning requests that you've had before you in the past. Again, these requests come to you because these are awnings that extend out into our city's right-of-way. And so the agreement that was included in your background packet is a standard agreement that we've used for these types of situations. There was some confusion because of the name on this case being the Texas Theater of San Angelo, so I do want to emphasize that that is the owner of this building, but the building in question is not the actual Texas Theater of San Angelo. And I'll show you some pictures of this in just a moment. No notifications are required for these types of requests, so we don't have anything to report there. This building is the building that you see the arrow pointing to here at the corner of Tuig and Irving Street. Again, this is in the downtown area. This is a relatively small building that's being utilized for potential commercial occupancy. And so the intent of the owner is to place this awning on the front of their building that will both function as cover for pedestrian traffic, and also for signage for the building. The dimensions of the awning are shown in your background packets and shown here as well. I do want to clarify that this is an incorrect measurement. It reads seven feet, four inches. It's actually seventy-four inches, that that will extend into the public right-of-way. And the awning is just shy of twenty-six feet in length. It will run the entire face of this building. This is a rendering that was provided by the applicant, who would be entering into this agreement with the city. And here's a more, perhaps, view that shows you a little more detail of the intentions. Again, this will be a black canvas awning. It will detail the name of the business on the front of that awning, and it will be attached to the building. The front of the building is, currently has some tile features. They're looking to make that stucco, but again, that is outside of the nature of this presentation. We're simply asking you for consideration to approve the placement of the awning in the public right-of-way. Here's a picture of the subject property. As you can see, there actually is an awning in- As you can see, there actually is an awning in place today. We were unable to find any records of this being agreed upon with the city. So again, we're simply making sure that we cover our bases this time and have this on file for the client.
The size of the existing awning, is it similar to...
It is actually the same dimensions, so it extends exactly as far out as the proposed awning would extend. So you won't see much substantial change there, other than in appearance itself.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to approve in a second. Further questions for her? Okay, do I have public input on this item? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, number 14. Holy smoke, y'all are my heroes.
I apologize, these slides are out of order. Okay, this item is a planned development district. The request is by West Company, Granger McDonald. It is for a 9.8 acre property, and that's located just west of the intersection of Northwest Drive and Green Hill Road. This is in southwest San Angelo. Showing the aerial photographs here, it mainly just denotes that the area is unimproved, and that is true at this time as well. There are some businesses along this frontage road. We have the Mattress and Furniture Center here. We have Sudden Lake Communications, so you're all probably familiar with that stretch of road. This particular request is for a planned development that would allow multifamily living. The subject property is zoned, a combination of RS1 and heavy commercial, neither of which allow that multifamily usage. And so the subject property, which I have a slide of here showing you a photograph, is planned to be developed. And I will show you the plans here. First, the plan for the street construction, which would be a necessity to bring traffic to this particular subdivision. Those roads are not in place today, but they will be part of the subdivision process and will be improved to city standards. The Planning Commission at their most recent meeting did approve this subdivision and verify that it did meet all of the city requirements. This photo here is showing the concept, the graphic concept plan. Please remember that when we're looking at a planned development district, this is part of the ordinance, and so they are required to build to the specs that they show in the graphic concept plan that you see here. We do, I believe, have someone in the audience that can answer specific questions, but know that this is intended to be, again, multifamily apartment complex type of development. You do see that there is a main facility in the center of this development, that would be your leasing office, your laundromat, your swimming pool, those shared facilities. And the remainder of this development is planned to be a combination of one-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, and three-bedroom, two-bath apartments. Also significant in the graphic concept plan are the renderings and elevations, which I have shown here. These are also part of the ordinance that we're asking you to approve today, and so they will be required to comply with what they've submitted as their plans for the elevations and materials. This requirement also falls under the Urban Design Review. Section 204 of our zoning ordinance requires multifamily developments with several buildings to go through that process. The applicant has already gone through that process, and it was approved. That is an administrative process, so know that they have already done this as well. The proposed PD ordinance, we can go through the details if you'd like, but again, the main things that I want you to focus on are that, number one, it only allows for multifamily living and a leased house amenity center. Any other types of uses, if those were desired, would have to come back through the process that would go to Planning Commission and to you for approval. Also, want to emphasize, the development, again, would be in accordance with the proposed site plan that we just reviewed, and that it would be built with the materials and colors that were approved in that urban design review. The signage will be matching the dwelling units and material, and they've also proposed to put some sidewalks into this development, making it a walkable type of development.
Go to the items that are required, counsel, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it's, and just kind of say to us, "It is, it is, it is."
Right.
And let's just do that.
The street construction that is being proposed would handle the traffic capabilities of the area. It is in conformance with our thoroughfare plan for that area. We also find that it, and the Planning Commission also found that this is consistent with our vision plan, because it does provide a transition into nearby residential areas. Right now, there's that stark contrast of heavy commercial abutting, single-family residential, and that's clearly not desirable, so this is a better transition area for that. Our comprehensive plan also speaks to infill development in areas where infrastructure's in place. This does seek to do that, also adding infrastructure that's key to our city that we don't currently have. And again, the mixed-use potential, having several different uses available in a walkable, accessible area, is also part of our comprehensive plan. And so with the Planning Commission, we went through all of the criteria in the zoning ordinance for zone change considerations, and they unanimously agreed five to zero that it did meet those plans and policies, and recommended approval to you all.
I agree, and I make a motion to approve.
I have a question.
I have some questions.
Okay, you have a motion on the table, and I have questions, I think, I guess, before I get a second, okay? So I've got a motion. My first one is Mr. Hirschfield, then Ms. Farmer.
Why a PD? I mean, why, is the current zoning not sufficient to...
The current zoning does not allow multifamily construction under any circumstances. In looking at what type of zoning...
So what is the multifamily zoning?
You could do it in a number of zoning districts. We have multifamily-specific zoning districts. We also have a couple of commercial zoning districts that with conditional use approvals would allow multifamily development. In this case, as with all cases, we reviewed all of the options with the applicant and let them determine what would be the best course of action. Planned development districts are usually choices that are selected when you're looking at crossing and creating transitions where they don't normally occur. That allows, with the ordinance, to tailor that development, rather than simply having it to be a one-size-fits-all type of development that would meet the regulatory standards. But in this case, the applicant did participate in this. They provided us with all of these materials. They had already pulled together plans, and so they were supportive of this proposal.
So you believe that the PD, with the plans and specs and such, that you've, that has been pulled together, is the proper zoning for this development?
I think it provides more protection for the single-family residential zoning nearby. There is a specific expectation of what's going to be placed on that property, rather than it being left wide open. And while that's okay in some properties, when you're looking at creating a transition...
And so to develop beyond, again, I just want to make sure that beyond the site plan that you've, that they've presented and the renderings and such, that that would require a reclassification or more approval, correct?
You're correct, if they wanted to shift gears at some point in the future. Now, there are some administrative leniencies built into the ordinance. For example, if they wanted to change the number of units that are one-bedroom, we can do that without going through the process again. But if they want to make a deviation from what they've shown us, then yes, that does require.
A substantial deviation from this, okay.
The PD stays with the land forever, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I watched your planning meeting on TV, because I wasn't able to attend, and I picked up something that I thought was a very valuable tool. In some other cities that they do their special use, or their PDs, one-year renewable. It has to be renewed annually. And I like that, because if you have problems, and I'm going to describe the problems in that area, that's my district, and when the dance hall fires up and is going out of there, the sound just circles and lands on all the residential homes, and I don't want, how many units is this?
I'm sorry, I don't have the number.
I don't want 300 or 200 more complaints of the noise in that district. So I'm curious as to if we can make the PD annual renewal. That way, we have something to address complaints with, that would give an incentive to make sure that it's kept quiet and peaceful in living. And then my other request is, that's a flood-prone area. The type of construction, have we looked at that? And the soil and the type of foundation? Because I don't want to see what we've seen in other areas with foundation problems, and because that is a flood area. I'm happy with, you know, the apartment complex, but I just want to know that we've taken these precautions as it's being built. And I'd like to know how the other council members feel about an annual renewal on all PDs on this and others in the future.
Well, the problem is, we do have some legal requirements that we have to meet. Conditional uses, for example, are allowed to have a time limit, and we do have those built into our ordinance. But anytime that we formally amend the zoning map, which is what a zone change does, we are not by law required to place conditions unless it's a planned development district or time restraints on those. That's a matter that's been...
This is a planned development, so we couldn't put that condition on there?
We cannot limit the time on items in which we amend the official zoning map, so that would be zone changes and planned development districts. Now, your conditional uses, you can do that with, and we actually have that in our ordinance. But the State Supreme Court and the legislature have tested this several times and have found that cities, if they feel that it's a change that is best for that area enough that they want to amend the zoning map, then they must be willing to live with that for the entirety as that land carries on to other property owners in the future.
Personally, I think this three-story buildings that we're looking at here is going to make a great sound buffer for the people in the bluffs, the lower bluffs and stuff like that.
To the point.
I think. But it is a circle in there, just a megaphone, so I want us to be aware of that going in.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this as presented, and I have good conversation. Do I have any other points from council? Mr. Morrison.
Well, I attended the planning meeting, and I think that they very, I think that was a very, very well-vetted, this entire thing, and I think it's good for the area.
Okay, and do I have any public comment before I call for a vote? Call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move forward then to item number 15. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance related to zoning. This is case 13.02 concerning Debbie Clark, and again, interim director of Development Services, A.J. Favre presenting.
Thank you. This request is more of a minor zone change in that we're simply looking to amend the zoning district in this area from a single-family residence, RS1, to two-family residential or RS2. There were 22 notifications sent out on the property. There were three received in favor. We did not receive any in opposition to the request. This particular location is at the intersection of Montague and Beacon Street. This is north of Houston-Hart Expressway, and this is in the northeast sector of San Angelo. It is a largely residential area and dates back to 1954 within our city limits. This is the series of six lots that are the subject of this request, and as you can see, there are two lots currently occupied by a single-family residence that would be converted into a two-family residence, leaving some vacant space for another unit to be placed in the future. The vision plan map of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be developed in a neighborhood fashion, so this request is consistent with that map. The two property owners who wrote in in favor of this request are located at one directly across the street and the other just catty-corner from that lot, so they are in close proximity and were supportive of this request. This is just a photograph of that subject property. This is looking from Beacon Street, and again, you can see the vacant area there at the corner intersection, which allows for, again, placement of a future unit. And this is just looking around that vacant residential lot at some of the other residences. This is the home which is currently on the subject property. It will need some additional work to convert that into a single, I'm sorry, a two-family residence that meets all of the applicable building codes, so we are working with the property owner to navigate what those requests are. The planning staff heard this request at their most recent meeting. They did unanimously recommend approval of this by a vote of five to zero. And again, the conversion from single-family to two-family still keeps us within that neighborhood type of connotation for this area. We also found that it was consistent with our plans and policies, because again, it promotes some infill usage of some vacant properties where infrastructure is currently present, and it allows some investment in that particular neighborhood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfield. I think Mr. Alexander nudged out the second, and then I have a question from Ms. Farmer.
Can you picture there is a mobile home in the background?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that on the subject property? I mean, this isn't going to turn that old house into an office, and then we're going to have a little RV park there or something?
No, it's not on the subject property. It's on a neighboring property, and we did verify that they had a special use allowing that placement. So we did look at it to see if it was a violation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Morrison.
I commend Debbie Clark for what she's doing out there. She's, they are working to improve an area that has been neglected for many years, so I applaud her for this.
Outstanding. Do I have public comment on this item? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 16. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance for zoning. Again, this is case 13.03 related to Tom Green County, and again, our presentation by A.J. Favre.
On this request, we're looking at a change from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial. This property, we sent out 17 notifications in association with this request, and we received none in favor or in opposition of this. This property is located at the intersection here, frontage along Pulliam Street, so you may be familiar with this, just south of Loop 306. This is a county-owned facility, and it was formerly used as a county facility. I believe that they had some health services that were offered out of this particular building. And now they are simply looking at transacting that property and looking at a zoning classification that was appropriate for the building in that area. Here's an aerial photograph. Again, this is just near the intersection of Pulliam and Bell. I'm sorry, I misspoke. The frontage is actually on Bell Street, but it's just near that major intersection. There are a number along Pulliam Street of restaurants in the same facilities, some auto body shops. It's quite a mix of commercial usage, and then as you back off of Pulliam, you see a residential neighborhood both to the east and to the west of the subject property. One of the reasons, in fact, that neighborhood commercial was looked at rather than a more intensive commercial zoning district, to be surrounded by residential usage, again, the notion of the transition that we talked about in a previous case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the vision plan map, which calls for neighborhood center at this location. So again, very consistent with what we're looking for there. This is looking south from the subject property. Let me back up here. There is a vacant church here that is nearby. This particular property is near the intersection that I mentioned earlier, Pulliam Street, where you do have a good deal of traffic. And so in looking at this request, the Planning Commission weighed it against the zoning ordinance, which does call for that type of transition that a CN can provide into a residential area. There was a special permit in place, which allowed for this building to be in operations at this location, but that special permit was very specific in nature. And the likelihood of someone else purchasing that property and wanting to use it for health and welfare services is low. And so again, the zone change was the request at this time in order to help make that building and that property more usable in the future to a potential property owner. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this by five-to-zero vote, and if you have any questions, we can certainly delve into those.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve from Ms. Farmer, a second from Mr. Hirschfield. I have a question, first from Mr. Morrison, then from Mr. Alexander. He was just making the motion. He was just making the motion, okay. Do you have any other questions or comments? You got, boy, y'all are incredible.
Get it up.
Do you have any public comment on this? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, this motion carries. Let's move to item number 17. This is also a zoning item, 13.04, concerning Abel Fernandez and Ms. Favre.
And this is very similar to the last case. We're looking at conversion of a single-family residential property into a neighborhood commercial property. There were 13 notifications sent out on this request, and we received zero in opposition or in favor of the request. This property is directly abutting East 14th Street, just southwest of its intersection with Main Street. You can see that the lot is a triangular-shaped lot, which does provide some difficulties in development, and so that was one of the rationale that the Planning Commission felt was particularly strong for this type of commercial designation, which requires a very small footprint in order to develop. The property, as you can see from the aerial photograph here, is currently a residence that's being proposed for conversion into office usage. I believe the tax service is looking at this. It is surrounded on all four sides by single-family residential zoning and development. It's a historically viable neighborhood, and so we want to be very careful what type of commercial we introduce to the area. One of the things that we look at when introducing commercial zoning into an area is frontage along a specific major street. 14th Street provides us with that requirement. Our thoroughfare plan does call for that to be a collector's street. The vision plan map for this particular property is split. It does show a combination of neighborhood and neighborhood center. This zoning district actually provides you with both of those, so it's really the only zoning district we offer that is the most closely matching what our vision plan calls for. So the request is very much in line with our plans. This is looking across the street. You see some of the residential properties that have developed in this area, just looking further around the area. This is the subject property itself. You can see behind this truck that's sitting here. You can see behind this truck that's sitting here. Again, you see the triangular shape of that lot, as you do have an alleyway that terminates into Fourteenth Street. So again, there are some difficulties with this, but the proposal that we have is one that fits both with our rules and regulations and meets the needs of the applicant, and also works with our comprehensive plan for the city. The planning commission's recommendation of approval was unanimous on this. Again, it helps us to bring some personal service type of activity into a neighborhood without being so intensive that we actually compromise the validity of that neighborhood. This area has been part of the city limits for quite some time, dating back to the late nineteen fifties, and there are several zoning districts in the area which provide neighborhood services, so this is very much in keeping in line with the types of offerings that a neighborhood would need to have in order to be successful. If you have any questions, we can get into those, and if not...
I think it's appropriate. I'd make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have, Mr. Morrison with the motion, Mr. Alexander with the second. Any further questions from council? Okay, public input on this item? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number eighteen. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance related to zoning, and this is chap, zoning item thirteen point oh-six, and this one is the City of San Angelo Development Corporation. Again, presentation by A.J. Favre.
On this property, only one notification was required. Again, the City of San Angelo is the large property owner in this area. The one notification that was sent to a nearby property owner was returned in opposition. There were some concerns about the types of usage and the effects that a heavy manufacturing type of activity would have on that individual's business. We did include that letter of opposition in your background report. The property that we're looking at here, you're all familiar with the industrial park, but it is quite large, so the section that we're looking at here directly abuts Farm to Market Road, Three Eighty. It is actually east of that corner section of property with the industrial park signage, which is right at the intersection of Loop Three of Six and Farm to Market Road. So this particular area, as you can see, is carved into three different tracks. This large area running through the center of the property is a drainage easement, so remember that. And again, as you can see, the property is mostly vacant. The property owner writing in opposition is located here, just immediately north of that subject property. The heavy manufacturing type of usage that is requested here is corresponding to an industrial type of classification in the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan and the Vision Plan Map, which is denoted by gray, so you can see that this particular area is called for as industrial, so that is consistent with the zone change that is brought to you today. Again, this is just showing that property owner who wrote in in opposition of the request, and I have several pictures here, but again, they're mostly showing the subject property and its vacant nature and the infrastructure in terms of streets and highways that are nearby. The planning commission talked about this at their most recent meeting. They recommended approval by a request of, I'm sorry, by a vote of four to one. The current property zoning is light manufacturing. Again, it's vacant. It was annexed to the property into the city in nineteen ninety-seven, and so in looking at some of the reuse of that property and incentivizing people to come out and locate, one of the things that was discussed was the need for some heavy manufacturing type of zoning to diversify the types of manufacturing that are allowed in this segment of the community, and we do have some city staff members in attendance that can speak to this if you have questions, representing the COSA-DC board, who is the applicant for this particular request. As I mentioned, it does comply with the vision plan. Other things that are important to remember as we're looking at this type of request is to follow some of the goals that are outlined for us in the comprehensive plan. One of those speaks directly to taking high-intensity uses and clustering those so that they're not widespread throughout the community, but rather they are located in very purposeful clusters of activity. And so, as you look at northeast San Angelo, and you look at the area that we've recently annexed and the development that's occurring along this corridor, you do see a good deal of increase in interest in industrial-type activity, so this is consistent with that type of approach. There was some discussion at the planning commission level about the differences between light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing. Just to very briefly sum those up for you, they're quite simple. The light manufacturing zoning district does have restrictions in terms of maintaining any effects from what activity is taking place on that property. So for example, noise is not allowed to be heard from outside the boundaries of the lot. Smells and vibrations and things of that nature are required to be confined to that specific property. Heavy manufacturing is a little more forgiving. And the next step of talking about that, another thing that the planning commission touched on and that city staff discussed with them was trying to find locations that are best suited for this type of intensity. And again, this area is a part of the community which is very isolated. Wouldn't be the kind of activity that we'd want to see on the frontage road of Loop Three of Six as a major gateway to the city, but with the sheer amount of land and property available that is currently vacant, this allows placement of some of this intensity sort of tucked away, if you will, behind some of those lesser intense uses. So again, recommendation by the planning commission was for approval, same with city staff. If you have some specific questions or requests about the type of thinking behind the application, again, we do have people in attendance to answer that for you.
Ms. Farmer.
One question. I noticed in the map, I see the only road into the property is up by the gentleman's home that is up there in his busy, busy. He's worried about increase, you know, in the files, the collegiate dirt. Is there another entrance possibly that's not right there at his home to this property?
Not his home.
That's Angelo Archives.
Right, this is...
Well, he has his business. I thought he lived there too, as well as his business.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, but is there another access to the property?
I know that there's been some discussion, I'm afraid I'm not privy to all of that discussion, but I think Bob Schneeman might be in attendance and could answer more, but there's been some discussion of additional infrastructure needed to get traffic into and through this area. This is a sizable lot, and so some sort of access will be needed in addition to what's along the front of the lot.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Further questions? Mr. Morrison.
I have several problems with this. One of the problems I've got is with the oilfield coming property and buildings all over town are being snapped up. We don't need to incentivize any business to come out here and set up an oilfield business. It's not necessary because they're coming anyway. And I understand from the planning meeting that the reason this is being changed is so that we can offer incentives to a company to come down here. I don't think it's necessary, and I certainly don't, I certainly will not go along with that. Also, Angelo Archives has been out here for some years, and this industrial park has been unused ever since, there's one building out there. No one has moved out there. It has been so underused, and Angelo Archives made the investment to go out there and build a building, and now they are concerned about noxi, by chemical vapors and smells and chemicals that are being used, and they're worried about the many noises and the problems that would directly affect their business, and I think we owe them some respect. And they have written a letter and said, "We do not want this here. It is not good for our business. It is not good for the area." And their opinion to me is very important. This is not a good fit. This is not an area for this, and I will not support it.
Okay, thank you, sir. One thing Mr. Morrison said, is this an oilfield company?
I'm sorry, I don't have information. That's outside of my area.
I didn't know we knew what was going on out there.
Bob Schneeman, interim director of economic development. We don't have a specific company in mind at this time for this property. We do have specific types of companies in mind for this, and yes, some of them would be oilfield-related. Our feeling is, and I might correct one other thing, and that is that right now we don't have a specific incentive in mind either. Obviously, we're not talking about a specific company, so we don't have an incentive in mind to offer to anybody. One of the potential things that we've been discussing is that we could offer land at perhaps a reduced rate compared to other properties in the city if we wanted to do that. Of course, that's got to come to council. It's got to be approved by COSA-DC first and then come to council for approval, so what we're asking now is that we rezone this portion of the property to have some property out there that is zoned heavy industrial or heavy manufacturing, to be able to locate some of these companies should they desire to do so.
To allow flexibility.
To allow some flexibility, and Mr. Morrison is right. We haven't had any real interest in the industrial park over the last, I believe it's about eight years, other than there are two buildings out there, one that is vacant and the other is Angelo Archives. I would like to, if I can, address Angelo Archives' concern a little bit. They have some, and perhaps some legitimate concern about additional noise and what have you. This street that's shown here, I guess everybody can see that, is an eighty-foot right-of-way. Our proposal would be to, as we plat this property, extend that street across this area over to what eventually will be Phase Three of the industrial park. So there would be an eighty-foot right-of-way there. There's also a fifty-foot setback requirement from that eighty-foot right-of-way, so the closest anything could be, just based on zoning and the plan, would be a hundred and thirty feet from any property line adjacent to, or the adjacent property line with Angelo Archives. We also have, at the industrial park, a committee, although we need to get it restaffed, that is going to review any, and is required by deed restriction, to review any development that goes into the industrial park. So we have the ability, and we would certainly entertain a direction from council, that we could provide additional buffering along there in the form of a landscape buffer or something like that to really try to mitigate any negative impacts to Angelo Archives. We're not, we're the development corporation. We're interested in economic development, not putting someone out of business or having an adverse impact on anybody's business, so we're certainly open to doing that kind of thing with any property that we plat out there.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Schneeman or Ms. Favre before I open this to public input? Okay, thank you. Public input on this item? Come on up. Want to...
Hello. My name is Stephanie Marr. I'm a resident of the Paulan subdivision. As everyone in San Angelo is aware, our prevailing winds come from the south, southeast, southwest, about fifty, five to fifteen miles per hour. This change to heavy manufacturing is directly southeast of the Paulan subdivision, Howard College, the Paulan Baptist Church, and Holloman Elementary. If you go through the planning commission's final markup memo, there is a lot of language that speaks of noxious odors, residents, you know, there is not a highly populated area within several miles. The actual distance from the center of that plat to my home is barely over three-quarters of a mile, and my concern is that these emissions will affect the quality of life in that neighborhood. There are other opportunities to build within the industrial complex that we have out there north of Howard College, and if we can look at that, then we have an opportunity to not affect those neighborhoods. There's thousands of people in Paulan. Another thing that I'm very concerned about at this time is, excuse me, this is all occurring in District Four. We have no representation seated from District Four, and I would respectfully submit that this item be tabled until we have representation and until COSA-DC and the planning department can revisit other areas of the industrial complex that can suit the needs of an M-H zone but be north of prevailing winds. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. You make good points. One thing I do want you to know, that those things that are north of Paulan are not city-owned, so they're, so part of this is related to how do we develop the city-owned land, and I heard your thoughts, so, but I did want you to understand why it's focused, to some degree, why it's focused on this property, so, okay?
Correct, but property north and west of that throughout the industrial complex is city-owned property. North of Howard?
No, most of that, the only thing that we really own out there is the landfill and property north of the landfill so that we could have another landfill, okay?
Okay.
And beyond that, nearly everything else out there is privately owned. I mean, it's annexed by the city, but the land is privately owned.
What about on this, you know, this east side of sixty-seven?
We own some, we own some of the land north of this property.
Correct.
Right?
All the way up to Two Seventy-seven, I assume?
No, not quite. No, we don't, but we do own some more north of, north of this land. And again, I heard you loud and clear. I just want you to understand, the city's land is on the east side, which is what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
It does extend north, but it really only extends north about that, that size again, and then it starts being someone else's or what have you, okay?
Okay, and north of here, where the city has approved an entertainment zone for Lucas Oil Racetrack?
Right.
Now, has an agreement been signed on that, that option yet?
No.
No? It's a consideration?
Well, and there's room around it. It's, remember his idea about where the road was going to go?
Mm-hmm.
So I understand your thoughts, okay?
Yeah, I'm, there's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
Noxious fumes. We already, honestly, Producers, which is due west of us, and from my home is about a mile and a half away, and when we have the north, northwest winds, we get the noxious odors from Producers.
Yeah, but that smells...
But hey!
It smells like money.
Ah, yeah, it does. It does.
I lived, I lived in...
It's naturally occurring. I don't have a problem with that. It's not prevailing winds.
I lived in the Panhandle for a long time. It didn't matter where the wind came from, it was, still smelled like money, but I understand...
I'm concerned with the chemical emissions.
I do, I understand. You said, you clearly said several times, noxious chemicals, and so, heard you clearly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Looking at this diagram there, it looks like there's runoff, stormwater runoff channel or corridor there. That would be a concern of chemicals going into the stormwater runoff, if it's going to create more problems for us?
You are correct, and that has been addressed in some previous meetings, that retention pond and the ability to stop any runoff from that, from that collection point be part of anything that we do with the development of these lands, so we are, we agree with you and understand that that's part of the responsibility.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted clarification.
Okay, yes, sir. Hello?
Morning. My name is Joe Grimes, and I'm, as a citizen, I understand I sit on the planning commission, and I voted on this one, but I just want to separate that for a moment. The only point that was brought up to me was as we as a city try to find a place and a way to capture some of the revenue that could be generated from an oil boom, we're forced with a question, and I don't say that I'm opposed to this or for it. I guess just raising the question and the awareness, if not here, then where in the city, and I don't have the answer to that. That's one thing that I seek your counsel for, and I agree, it does smell like money. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Dugan?
Nope, Mr. Dugan. No, okay.
Just very quickly, and I promise, because I'm the one that's tasked for the city marketing this, I have to tell you, I support the rezoning piece because we have an asset out there that we have not been able to market under the current zoning. This will give us opportunities. I know we'll have some opportunities within the next year if we have got that rezoning done, and so from our standpoint, it's very important that we get that done in order to be able to market that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have further public input? I think Mr. Alexander was trying to say something.
No, it's just real, it's real simple. We have, this problem to me, it looks like the beginning of other problems, other things we're going to look at. We're going to have to control growth, and if we get into reject, 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 they're just going to go somewhere else. They're going somewhere, and then we don't control anything, and I can see areas of town they can go to and just, they can put it right outside the city limits, but it's right next to residential areas in our town. It can get out of control in a hurry. We have to direct people to areas if we can, and this looks pretty good. It's not perfect, but we're going to have a lot of imperfect situations around town. It's not a great situation to be in, but, so there's some negatives to the oil boom, and this is just one of them. And if we can do pretty good like this, then we'll be in pretty good shape at the end, but if we don't control it, Odessa said, "You're in trouble." Control... Control it if you can, and this is one of those cases.
Okay. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Coming from an experience of having a lot of heavy manufacturing property, not, heavy manufacturing is not a bad thing. And I, I mean, that's, it's got a, it's being painted as this horrible landfill that everything is going to happen. There are still requirements that have to be followed. TCUQ that has to be followed. There's, there's other, you know, city ordinances that have to be followed. I mean, it happens every day, and heavy manufacturing is not a bad thing.
Okay.
And we're taking dormant land and making it developable. We don't want to compete with industry around here, but this is something we've got to do as a city, I think.
All right. I have a motion in a second, and we're at the point of calling for a vote. All those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. You have a four to one vote, Mr. Maris. Okay, this item has passed. Let's move on to item number 19. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance. This is zoning item 13.07, City of San Angelo Planning, and again, presented by Development Services Director AJ Fawer.
Thank you. Last request, this one is probably going to go very quickly because you are familiar with the backstory. This particular property, we had 13 notifications which were required to be sent out. We received two in favor and zero in opposition. This property shown on the slide is in far southwest San Angelo, just near the city limits, and you are probably familiar with it because we did bring a case to you late last year that looked at converting what had previously been zoned as a planned development district to a single-family residential district, with the story behind that being that, again, the developer who had originally looked at developing that as more of a gated community type of thing had, had essentially gone out of business, and those lots were being sold to private property owners for their own construction of single-family homes. The planned development district did require several amenities to be built in order to obtain permits for residential homes, and with the now-defunct Homeowners Association, and with that all being privately owned and the streets being publicly dedicated now, that PD has, has got some details that are very difficult for those residents to be able to meet in order to build in this location. So we brought you one piece of that in 2012. This is the final and remaining piece of this. We've worked with the banks that retained ownership following that change in ownership.
Please tell me all that land is not naturally darker, is it?
No, it's not. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just go back to the last picture.
Yes. It, it does look somewhat ominous, like a dark cloud, but I promise. It's, it, there's no cloud, I promise. But the, it is consistent with the Vision Plan map, which calls for residential. So again, this is more of a housekeeping item than representing a major zone change. The Planning Commission did recommend approval to you unanimously. Staff is also recommending approval. We can get into more details if you have questions, but that is the summary of what we're looking to change here.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve is presented. Do I have further questions on this from council? Do I have public input on this item? Let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. At this time, folks, we're going to need to take a break. We, the commander of Goodfellow Air Force Base is speaking today, and so we felt like we would, we would break and go attend that so that we would be up to speed on what's going on at Goodfellow Air Force Base. After we come back, we will go into executive session, and then we will, we'll start with regular session again, and I'm going to tell you that it's going to be 1:45 or 2 o'clock before we come back, okay? At this time, I'll take us, well, frankly, we'll just adjourn into, to a recess and go attend that and come back. We'll actually meet in here long enough to go into executive session, okay? Call us back to order for the regular session so I can take us into executive session, okay? Because I'd like to get us back here about 2:00 if we can. So at this time, I'm going to bring us into, take us into executive session under provision of the Government Code Title V Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A Open Government, Chapter 551 Open Meetings, Subchapter D Exceptions to the requirement that meetings be open, Section 551.071, to consult with an attorney on a pending or contemplated, on pending or contemplated litigation. Also, under Section 551.072, to possibly deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And also, under 551.087, to discuss an offer of financial or other incentive to a company with whom San Angelo is conducting economic development negotiations. So we are now at 1:17, moving to executive session, and the goal of getting back in here at 2:00, or very little, very shortly after. Let me call the meeting to order. It's 2:17, and we will begin the regular session again. We're going to start with item number 20. This is the discussion of the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Plan, Preparation Procedures and Submissions, presentation by our Budget Manager, Morgan Traynor.
Good afternoon.
Would you need to enter them in there somewhere?
Just throw one in, yeah.
All right, all right.
Mr. Valenzuela and I spoke, and we wanted the opportunity to put the, the same presentation before you from the strategic planning session, just with the few changes. We had some items marked as funded that were not, some items that were listed twice. So very briefly, that's what's in your background. I won't waste your time by going through those each line by line again, since we did have that in-depth conversation. Just to let you know, we are on track to have this discussion today and then approval at the March 19th meeting. We are hearing your priorities about that infrastructure, specifically street reconstruction is a priority and should have a large piece of the CIP. Recall that since Mr. Bailey spoke about the engineering survey and the plan that would be required to know which streets should be included, what's going to be in the CIP is, is truly just a plan until we have those final dates. But when you have the, the draft CIP that'll go out tomorrow in the background, it will have a street reconstruction component, a larger amount, as we're hearing that from, from you guys. So we appreciate that. Again, just a summary of what we had from our public meetings, a lot of terrific input, updated information here for your reference. Like I said, we won't go through each of those line by line, but that's what I have prepared for you today, and, and again, taken it through the entire CIP calendar and adoption for March 19th by resolution.
Okay. And there were, and the priorities, three things, were the streets, the police department building, and, and trying to do something to lower the property tax rate, so...
Yes.
And there were lots of other things, but those were the first three and probably the umbrella items for everything else to be under. Is there any question on this or a motion to, to tell her that she's headed the right direction? Do we have to? It just says discussion. I think we're set. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 21, this is the discussion of revisions to the hotel occupancy tax allocations, and... Hi, would you like to, would you like to make a public comment on a discussion item? I'm skipping right through those, aren't I?
I know. And, and it's late in the day, I can understand that. But on, on this one point, I, I just had...
Jim Gray.
Pardon me, Jim Ryan, for the record. I was at the CIP meeting in this room early in February, and this is something that I've been very interested in for a long time. This room had more people in it than it ever had today for that meeting. We had people concerned with MLK North, we had people concerned with Fairmont Cemetery, we had people with other issues, but this room was full. And that's what we envisioned when we put CIP into charter, moved it from ordinance to charter. And I, I've just got to say, I was so pleased to see that kind of turnout and that kind of public participation, and I want to encourage it in the future.
Right. Yeah, I can remember one where there were about seven of us at Fort Concho, so it's nice when it ends up being like this, isn't it?
I, I can remember one where myself and another person showed up, and we had staff there, and instead of going through the presentation, they just sort of looked over and said, "Okay, Jim, what's your problem?" And we trotted out Bell Street, and we all went home.
Okay.
But, yeah, this is a huge improvement, and I hope it continues.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment? All right, thanks. I'll move us on to item number 21 then. This is the discussion of revisions to the hotel occupancy tax allocations and any action in connection there to reviewing the proposed convention and Visitors Bureau contract specifically. Presentation by our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Michael Dane.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, you've given direction to staff to manage this growing resource and to, through changes in the terms of the contract, try to improve accountability and benchmarking, through benchmarking-type mechanisms. So today we have the draft for the contract between the city and the CVB, and I want to just hit the high points and go from there. What we'll seek is if you approve of this, we'll come back on a consent agenda in the future with authorization for staff to negotiate and execute.
Okay.
So hitting the high points today, you'll find in Section 5, under budgeting and funding, that the contract is...
Michael, sir, Mr. Dane, turn that off so it's not...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Section 5 Budgeting and Funding, that instead of an allocation, a percentage, or a ratio, we'll be contracting for an amount certain or a specific amount, $795,000. To give perspective on this, last year we distributed a hair over $1 million to the CVB. So this is, this is an amount that they'll be counting on, and it will be less than we distributed last year, and likely less than we would distribute this year without this At some point, if we want to go into that budget in detail, we could work that out. But that's a key point here, a fixed amount, $795,000, and that's approximately $200,000 less than was distributed last year. Also in that section, there's a discussion of fund balances that they will be authorized to retain. One having to do with working capital, generally a fund balance to consider as a reserve for fluctuations in activity or unforeseen items. And then two lines, one having to do with sports promotion, $40,000, and CVB bid incentive project of, of $40,000. The working capital fund balance that, that they propose, that we propose that they retain is approximately 120 days of this budget.
Okay.
In our world, I think we're probably going to be thinking more along the lines of 90 days. I think 120 is a good place to start, and we can trim that down in the future if we need to. That does give us a little bit of cushion. If we experience adverse occupancy tax experience and need to ask them to dip into that for their routine distributions or for routine budgetary expenditures, we can ask them to do that. But while that's a little higher than we would set it as a goal, certainly if we were to talk about what we would prefer, higher would be better than lower. In addition, one of the terms we'll get to is this, that we're proposing a two-year agreement, and we can, through subsequent discussions, discuss what year two should look like or the next contract renewal should look like. So think about that. About 120 days to start, and we, obviously, your options are wide open. I would advocate that they have some, that they retain some fund balance to, just to manage cash flows. Benchmarks and Budget Conference, this was a key item for council. The contract proposes that the mayor, city manager, and an additional council member or their appointees shall participate on a quarterly basis in meetings designed to develop and then monitor benchmarks, really for both organizations. What, what does the contract say that the CVB will do for the city, and is the city living up to its side of the agreement? That is really the heart of the benchmarking language. That's in Section 7. I'll just point out, Section 9, they continue to participate in the city's group insurance program as long as that's legal. They participate now, those employees do, and this, I don't think it's a problem, but it is, it's a little bit of a different thing, and I wanted to point that out. Section 11 talks about unspent funds returned. In the event they were to have positive performance, they're authorized to keep that fund balance amount. The amounts that they save in excess of that should be returned. Or if we were to say, year two, we would have a lower fund balance amount, that excess would be returned. Term of the contract, two years. On the first anniversary date, we'll, they will approach the council for approval of a new budget, a new annual budget. So council will approve, if they want to propose a different, a budget amount for next year, when they propose a budget amount for next year, they will do so to council, and council will approve it, or, or not. There'll be a process there. You retain the authority there. Those are the high points. Again, really the two key areas. One has to do with administration of dollars, amounts, how do we allocate, approve, that kind of thing, amounts, and services that are provided. How do we benchmark, manage, assess that performance? So those are the high points that are in here, and we're here, I think we have some representatives of the chamber and the CVB here if you have questions. They've been very cooperative, and they're eager to show that they're doing a good job, so they're ready to start the quarterly meetings, I believe.
Okay. Questions for him on this presentation?
I, I thought we were talking three-year term.
We started out with two. I think they would be open to discussing three, and...
See, to me, I, I like the way this contract is written. Must have had a good attorney on it, I don't know. I know fallacy of words there, but, but, you know, basically where, you know, it, it does give an opt-out of the contract to renegotiate if there's not a term on, on budget. So to me, it would be an effective thing of saying, "I like the idea of three years." Because since we're already halfway into year one, it's a year-and-a-half contract essentially, so...
Well, I would agree that that makes sense. If you have the outs and if you like the new terms, that makes absolute sense. Over a 20-year time period, a two-year contract, a two-year term will be renegotiated 10 times.
Right.
Or renegotiated nine times, and a three-year will be six or seven times. So you automatically save, if you, if you've got terms you can live with, it saves us time having to bring this back up. So I, you know, we can talk to them about three, and I'll, I'll bet they approach that with an open mind.
Get their opinion on what, what they think.
Yes, Phil Neighbors, San Angelo Chamber. Three years would be great. Every year, as we present a new budget, we know that we also will be meeting benchmarks. So whether it's a new contract or whether it's a review of an existing contract and looking at performance and benchmarks, we're happy with that, but it probably will save both staff on both sides some time, so we'd be most open to that.
I'm looking over here, three years seems okay. I think three years is the guidance you're getting, Mr. Dane.
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Farmer?
I think the attorney put two in there.
If I could ask Mr. Allen to explain something to my uneducated legal mind. Item 13 in the contract, which speaks of termination, the way I'm reading it, it says that the chamber may terminate any deficiency by the city, but I don't see it equally that the city could terminate the chamber by deficiency. Am I just not reading it right? It looks one-sided to me, the way it's written.
The, the intent of that paragraph was to carry forward the termination by either party, and I believe, right, and I'm looking at paragraph 13.
So what's your question?
The contract may be terminated for cause if, after 30 days' notice of any default of deficiency...
By the city.
By the city. And that, that, what that means to say is that the city would be delivering notice of default to the chamber. So if...
The deficiency is at the chamber?
The power, the power to terminate would be exercised by the city.
Okay. But the language is confusing because it says...
But, the language is confusing, because it says deficiency by city, but it's the notice of the city.
Right.
And the chamber's entitled to, has the opportunity based on the notice to cure the deficiency.
I think it's in the city's favor, but I thought it should read either way, but this way it's just the city's favor.
And the chamber fails, or is unable to cure, so it says that they're the ones...
On the chamber's side, the, the right still remains to enforce the contract, should it come to that, and I think that's a sufficient remedy. So, we, we figure your checks will, will clear the bank, and, and, so we felt like this was the best way to give us a little bit of protection in the event that we're doing something you don't approve of, still giving you the flexibility, and then we feel like we're protected as well.
Shouldn't the word "and" be put into the sentence right before chamber? Two things have to happen. Number one, the city says this is a term, we're gonna terminate this contract, and the chamber, and this is why, and the chamber fails, or is unable to cure any specified default or deficiency. Two things have to, right?
That's a fault of, due to my age, a recent graduate of law school would probably just use one word. Older guys tend to be too wordy. The point you're making is, is that the condition should be clearly described. Anything that we do that doesn't cure, and I'd be glad to...
Well, I'm just saying, two things have to happen. Number one, we have to notify you. Number two, you have to not be able to cure the problem.
Correct.
So, there's two, two things have to happen. So, the contract may be terminated for cause, and I'd put A, if blah blah blah, and then B, and the chamber fails, that's what I would do, but there's two things that have to happen here.
Sam, you're talking, you read too well for those little words.
And that way, that way it's very clear that two things have to happen, that we can't just terminate it, we have to notify you, and then you can't, if you don't cure the problem, then it's terminated. Cure any specified default or deficient, it doesn't say how many days, though, you have to cure the problem.
It was intended to be 30 days.
So, you would need to put the...
30 days and the date of notice.
Okay.
Okay, I would recommend that you just look at that and maybe change...
Well, I think those are good ideas, we'll be glad to incorporate those.
We don't need to be playing lawyer up here.
Okay.
Okay, hang on, let's get back to Mike, Mr. Dane, thank you.
Well, is it a 30-day process, or a 60-day process? That's my question.
What I wanna do is let these guys decide that.
Okay.
That's where I'm trying to go, I just wanna give them enough policy.
We can negotiate that.
Just wanna give them enough policy to, to let, let them go through, and, and, and give the cure date, and so forth. We'll get approval in the final end, okay? So, okay. What else do you have for Mr. Dane, as it relates to the things he gave you as the top-line items in this negotiation?
Are you gonna bring the contract back with the three years, or do we approve it as...
Well, you're gonna give him approval through, today you're giving him approval on direction. What he said was, he was gonna come back with it in a consent agenda item.
We're minimizing the council time. If we get to your direction now, we'll bring that up, bring it back as a consent item with the three years. We'll discuss clarity.
But then put the contract in the agenda, consent agenda item, you run through it through your pre-reads, and then if you, if you don't like what you see, you'll pull it from the consent agenda item, and, and have them, have them answer questions. If you are comfortable with the contract, you'll just vote it through on the consent agenda, okay?
We will also need to, there are two or three different steps, need to go with the occupancy tax management change that we're going through, and so we'll, we'll grab the next, next low-hanging fruit available, and start with that. Since we're contracting outside of the terms of the current ordinance, we'll probably grab that ordinance, and bring that for introduction as soon as we can work that out.
Okay. Did you get what you needed, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, do I have public comment on this item? Outstanding. As a, I think that's the first time all day on a discussion item I've remembered to ask for public input, so, I don't know why, I've got it down, when there's a vote to be taken, that I have to get public input, but on the discussion items, I'm just clipping right along. Item number 22 is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending established boundaries of Single Member District 1. Alright, y'all be careful, this is my councilman.
Mayor, this is, this is basically to, since we've had the last two annexations, I have to incorporate that into the single-member district for voting.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Do I have any questions on this before I call for a vote? Do I have any public input on this item? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I have a consideration and possible action on matters discussed in the executive or closed session. At this time, it should be known that, based on council, the city council has, has given authority and direction to offer settlement in the personal injury claim number A 012255, and that action was taken in executive session. Beyond that, there are no other, other matters to be talked about from executive session at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any, any questions on this? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move forward then with the consideration of approving various board nominations.
Motion to approve items 24A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve items A, B, 24A, B, and C as presented. Any questions? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number 25 is announcements and consideration of future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I have an item I'd like to add to future agenda, possibly next meeting.
Okay.
I know that there's been a lot of work expended by our tri-city review on water and research, and if we may, I would like a brief to bring us up to date, and the citizens up to date.
Let me, let me ask specifically, that we call it the West Texas Water Partnership?
Yes.
Okay? It's very important that people understand it's a regional effort, not a, not a three-city effort, so, so, West Texas Water Partnership, and, and we, we can get an update?
I've got a topic. I, with all the discussion and such about, what is it, the, the housing and, and items like that, I would, I think, and, and a lot of things coming up in front of the Planning Commission, I think it would be appropriate for this body to at least have a discussion on that, get an update. I know, Mr. Alexander, you've been, and others have been working on, getting, gathering data. I think it would be a good opportunity to share some of that data, and kinda get us educated, because there's, you know, I know about that much, hear about that much, and so, I would like to hear more of the rest of the story, I guess, and, and then at least, I know it won't be in action, because there won't be something there, but I do think it would be appropriate for us to have the discussion, understand the facts, hear the, some of that, and, so...
Mr. Valenzuela would be able to update you on the committee, or someone could update you on the committee that Mr. Alexander and I are serving on, on housing, and what's going on there, and you could hear the Planning Commission work, and so forth, that's fine, that, that all sounds fine. Mr. Alexander?
Now, I wrote you an email, and, and I really don't know if I think about this, but I do think we need to think about it. That is, that we have properties that appear to be in the city limits that are not in the city limits, and therefore we don't have control over them, and man camps can move in, and you'd think it's right in the middle of the city. How do we let that happen? But, it's, we have to let it happen by not taking action, this council not taking action, annexing those properties, and controlling what happens around us. I think we have to be proactive, so I'd like to, you know, it's gonna take AJ thinking, and letting us know what the laws are, what could happen, and then also wanna look at 277, the East Loop, the Ports de Plaines Highway. If, if we haven't annexed that land to interfere either side of the highway, then we don't have control over that either, and I think we need to have control over that land. And I look across the street from Bonham, I had brought that up before, but that is not city property across the street from Bonham off to the southwest, that is out of the city limits, we have no control over it yet unless we annex it, we have very little control. So, I think we need to discuss strategies, and it's gonna come from that housing meeting. We're not there yet, we don't understand quite what we're doing yet, because we're still discussing, but I think it's going that direction, and I think it needs to be on future agenda items.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Mayor, we had asked the Water Department, Mary and, and Michael, to prepare some information for us about water billing, and incentives, or way to give back to people who conserved, and that report was going to be given, and on a day, and we had to postpone the information back in December, January, and I, Michael, you familiar where I'm, I'm going? Like, people had the new super washers and dryer, washers, and dishwashers, and how that they could be offered a center for water conservation, and Mary had prepared some ideas, and was here that day, but we had to postpone the subject.
Can, can I throw out that, there's been a, a water conservation group kinda get-together on their own, not a, not, I mean, they're doing their own thing, and I think it's a fantastic deal, and there've already been some discussions, and that's what they're doing, and I, I would personally like to see this group kinda gain a little bit of steam, because they're talking about that on a private level, I mean, on, and they're gonna bring, wanna bring something back, and that was an initiative they took on their own. So, citizens are stepping up, and that's, that's what I'd like to see, is kinda see where that, where they might take that thing.
Okay.
But it's in line with, he's acted with that right there.
But it's something that Mr. Willey was prepared to present to us, or research and findings, and I'd have to go back and look at the data, but we never got the information, because we had to postpone it, and then...
Well, we did a presentation on conservation credits.
We did.
And Tony, as far as water conservation efforts, Tony made a presentation, and talked about what some other cities are doing, that kinda thing. That would be Tony, I think.
Okay.
And she did some of that, but we can revisit that, and see if we've dropped the ball somewhere, if something's falling.
Well, I will say that, that Tony has been invited to the next meeting.
Okay.
With these guys, so, it's, they're gonna get, get more involved, and get, start getting just a chunk of the city...
We need to be there and be involved, that's, yeah.
City involvement in that.
We'll follow Daniel's direction for how he thinks the best way to follow up with you is, and...
And also, I had asked for information with reference to the retirees, and that, you and I have talked about it, and we need to present and talk about the, how the retiree raised, Cola, thank you. I don't recall that ever being presented back to the council.
Okay.
You were doing some work for me on it.
We, we will look into that. We've already preliminary looked into it, and on a preliminary basis, we think there was a presentation made a couple of months back, but I think you and I need to talk about that.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go from there.
Other items for a future agenda, or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, call for that.
Did I miss someone else to speak? Sorry.
Call for the vote. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned.
I thought I might've interrupted, so...